And welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. Tonight is Tuesday, the 25th of June. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Delauso?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
And I'll show Councilmembers, Vice Mayor Gilman as absent.
Great, thank you very much for that. And also for the audience watching us at home and in the background here, I'd like to introduce our staff that's here tonight along with our council. I'm your mayor, John Delauso. Our vice mayor, Wendy Gilman, as you heard just a minute ago, is absent tonight. We have councilmember Mark Landman, John Moore at the far end, and Susan Harvey, our city manager, Damian Obid, our city attorney, John Bakker. This is the first time I've said that instead of Robin Donahue, so I'm just kind of, well, it is kind of the second time. And more importantly, it's John, because I always wanted to call her John anyway. You just, you can never have enough. All right, let's move on. Our chief of police, Michael Parrish, our city engineer and director of public works, Craig Scott, our administrative services director, Angela Quarter, and our senior planner, John Paul Harries, and of course, our city clerk, Lauren Burgess. All right, with that, if you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose hands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And we are now at item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, please show a four, what is that, a four zero one? Is that an abstention because she's not here? That's what we'll call it. Thank you. Moving on, item five, announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and visitors and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code, 94931, to 888-777. And finally, Measure G supports a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Now we're at item six, which is presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would suggest that we postpone that.
Postpone that.
Until our presenter arrives, yes.
Dustin is not in the room as we speak. All right, then we will come back to item six. Let's hold that. And we'll move on to item seven for approval of final agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Just one suggested change. I'm expecting that we'll have people here for regular calendar items, 12A and 12B. And it's just a suggestion that we move it up to after item 10, direction on future agenda items.
All right, so if council would allow that, so after item 10, we would go to item 12A and 12B, then go back to 11 and do A, B, and C, and then come back to 12C and 12D.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do know, having heard from a few people in the community, were interested to be here, I believe for both of those, but particularly for 12B. But they're also attending the meeting on the proposed gas station, if it's being held, I think, starting maybe a half hour before our meeting over at, right down the block. So I think they intend to come here, but they had hoped, I had said, looking at this schedule, it looks like it would be later rather than earlier.
So then perhaps we could just move...
12A?
12A up. Yeah.
All right, then do we have a thumbs up on the dais here? I'm moving 12A up?
Thumbs up.
Yes, it is. I didn't look your way. Thumbs up? Good, we're good, we're good. All right, so we will do that. We will move item 12A after item 10, and then we'll do item 11, A, B, C, and then go back to 12, B, C, and D. And if you can't follow that, we'll be playing bingo next Tuesday night. All right, let's move on to item eight, which is citizens' business. So citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where there is a disability accommodation that has been requested. So do we have anyone for citizens' business or consent?
As you all know, I was too traumatized by your actions a month ago to attend this last meeting, over your handling of the ethics charges against Councilman John Moore and Mark Lammon. You all acted like thugs and were cruel to me, once again shaming me by repeating John Moore's disgusting comment, once again in the last council meeting. You are as also dysfunctional as a council that you don't seem to get how to handle ethics charges. Read up on it, because once again, I have, like I have for nearly a year now, I am asking for ethics charges against John Moore and Mark Lammon, and for them to be properly handled. The ethics charges against John Moore is for writing a degrading name about me on his city email account. With Mark Lammon, I am asking for ethics charges for his using personals, his personal status and his personal email account to do city businesses, business repeatedly, and his dirty work against citizens. Mark Lammon wrote, for example, Mark Lammon wrote the DA Jill Ravitch on his personal email account and set up for her to investigate a citizen for a peeping tom charge. She investigated based on Mark's personal email and found that no crime had been committed. With both John Moore and with Mark Lammon, these ethics charges are based on known public records. With Mark Lammon, I have doubly the public records, as the DA's office sent them the records also. For the first time in a decade, please do your jobs as councilmembers and file ethics charges as asked by your citizens. And that's, I'm done with...
Do you have anything for, on consent?
Consent.
Okay, which items?
It's the city salary and the one about the, the study of the Gravenstein.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I was going to read my submitted written public comment, here it is, on the city salary schedule, but Mark Lammon has already disrespected and degraded my public comment in next, on nextdoor.com today. Yesterday, when I sent the same public comment, written public comment to him, the council, the council and the staff, it was the exact same warning as his post I had on, as my post on nextdoor.com. He once again did city business by using it in an ethical and proper way to grade my submitted public comment. The other item is the study is the gra, is, yeah, the study on the Gravenstein corridor. I didn't see one reference to the dangerous 270-degree turn onto West Kattati Avenue. Putting more businesses there without footing the 2 million out of 10 million street improvement project is irresponsible. We have been waiting for over 20 years now for this turn to be corrected. It was in the 1998 general plan as a priority. You all haven't saved a dime towards fixing the West Kattati turn. The turn needs to be addressed before someone is killed by your negligent actions and before any new businesses, including the cannabis businesses, go in there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else for citizens' business?
Lisa Moore, 8592 Lakewood Avenue. So I thought Daily Act was going to be on the agenda tonight, but I have some concerns about the pocket park next door to my home. So they recently, last Saturday, did mulching again, and, and put more bark down. So this is probably, I would say, the 10th time they've done that. So they've probably put about a foot of mulch on there. So that'll probably be that way for the next six months, when all the weeds come back to about this high, and then another volunteer event comes out. So I actually, and I've talked to Brianna at Daily Act, I've talked to Trey, and really trying to get a solution to this pocket park that is really not a food forest, it is more of an eyesore. What I would like to have done is to put this on the agenda at some point, and to make it a community park where we actually have plots, where people rent these plots, like the old community garden. I think it would be more taken care of, I think there'd be more eyes on the park, and I think what I've been told by Daily Act is they don't have the money to keep this park up, nor do they have the volunteers. So we do not have public works weeding there now, and we don't have the landscaping people weeding there. So at some point, you know, I guess this is, since it's right next door to me, but if you wanted, I could rally every neighbor in that L-section neighborhood also to come down and speak to this. But I think a solution would be, is to not mulch it one more time, but to maybe reinvent this park as, like you said, really a genuine community park for, for the Birt section, for the L-section, for people to use. And Daily Act seems very receptive to the idea, and I think it could be something that we could do in the future. I know, I would really appreciate it. So anyways, that's my two cents on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on citizens' business at this point in the meeting? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close this section. And we did skip forward through the presentation on the Veronda Falletti Ranch, but now that I see Dustin is in the house, we will now go backwards to item six, and we'd love to get a presentation. I don't know if staff has an intro, or if Dustin is just going to come right up and do this.
Just, no, no real intro for me. This, Dustin has a presentation on the status of the ranch and what's, what's coming up this year.
Great.
So, let him come on up.
Thank you. I did notice a typo. Is there any way that I could plug in this flash drive and get the right one loaded real quick? Yeah?
Answer is yes, but you have to do it yourself, probably, so.
I know. Well, anyway. Sure does.
If the laptop explodes, that will be considered a negative.
I think so.
Everyone see that pretty well? Okay. Well, thank you so much for having us. We're very excited to give a semi-annual presentation about our work right across the street over at the Veronda Falletti Ranch. For those that don't know, my name's Dustin Di Matteo, director of Farmster over there, as well as lead operator, program coordinator, mulch mover. I wear many hats over there, but I'm, once again, very excited to give this presentation. We're going to quickly cover the origin of Farmster. We're going to define some success over the last three years for our project as an organization. I like to call the following section, By the Numbers, a programs overview of a lot of the work we've been able to do just in these first several months, as well as prelude some of the upcoming events we have forecasted through September and December for the rest of this year. So quickly, on the origin of Farmster, it really began as a, an idea between myself and a small group of students at Sonoma State University. We were about to graduate, and we knew that Sonoma State didn't have an agricultural program. They had a wine business institute that was just starting to develop, but they didn't necessarily have any programs specific to intensive gardening, as well as really much about the food system at large. So we came together, some of our colleagues there in the photo. We had some great startup success. We were able to land on a mission and acquire about five acres at the time. Our mission to grow food and farm skills while maximizing local resources was our cause, and we gained and garnered a lot of support. And then around 2016, right around when the RFP was about to be delivered for the site right across the street, we were looking for a better headquarters to develop the organization for the long term. So that's a quick little summary of where we came from, and then we're going to dive into a little bit more explicitly what we've been doing over the last three years, and then transition to the first six months. So year one, 2015, 16, I mentioned the development as a small group. We raised roughly $30,000 with just two special events and a handful of donors. We were able to acquire a five-acre, five-year-for-500-dollar lease agreement with Sommo Village as one plan of community plan. And then we ran about five workshops with students and other nonprofit groups within that lease agreement. Year two, year two, we identified the Veronda Falletti Ranch as a great opportunity for us to, to plan around. We acquired it with the 4.37 for three-year license agreement with city staff here and council's approval. And then we've been strategizing and moving forward our plan for the last several months, which we'll take a deep dive into. But our little slogan we started was Grow, Share, Innovate, and we like to use that as our mantra, as well as kind of a guiding light for the programs that we've grown there, explicitly the Open Farm Friday, every third Friday from 3:00 until 5:00 o'clock. It's been a big hit dating back to around October, when we started with our Pumpkin and Squash drop site event. It led to me joining the Chamber of Commerce here in Kattati, as well as sharing this organization with the chamber, as well as neighbors, with a grand opening event there in the center. And then innovation, or adding new ideas to the community, just the way we operate, I've been calling it the Year of Pig, Year of the Pig, but we have a lot of people interested in the way that we manage our animals, and want to learn more about that. So that's a quick snapshot about what we've been doing the last six months. Oops, going the other way. So By the Numbers, statistically, I'll kind of break down just the three core programs we run out there. We've diverted about 5,000 pounds of food waste dating back to that October month. Throughout that several-month period, we've been able to rotate and currently have right around seven to eight different types of livestock on site. And then we average about 50 people in the two-hour window for that Open Farm Friday event, and we've ran at least several of them, so that's over 300 people in attendance in a short amount of time at that site. We open up the gate, we invite our neighbors and their friends, and they seem to enjoy a lot of the programs we've run. So a few of the things that the City of Kattati has asked from us is to independently program, operate, and develop the space. And, and once again, just a reminder, the definition of innovation isn't some far-out IT tech solution or anything like that, it's the action or process of innovating, or just doing something new. So I'm going to cover just a little bit about the programs that we've, we've found out that the community really likes, and that we want to keep doing for the next few years. But the first one is quite delicious and fulfilling, but it's food waste diversion. There's three source providers we have, primarily Sally Tomatoes over in Rona Park, Andy's Produce Market in Spas Pool, as well as Sweet Expectations here in Kattati. So we're able to divert a lot of food waste on a weekly basis, which feeds literally and figuratively into our livestock integration program. When we took over the space in late 2016, there were sheep on the site, and the city as well as the neighborhood wanted more animals. So as mentioned, we were able to bring in several different types of animals. I mentioned the Year of Pig with the little icon right there. We've got our highest intensity animals, in my opinion, as our pig, horse, and cow out there. The goats and sheep are moderate intensity, as well as the couple chickens and soul rabbit we have are a little bit more low intensity and passive. If I'd like to take just a quick second to introduce Nancy Preble, she's our management consultant on site, she's going to talk a little bit more about one of our more current and recent livestock that we've brought up.
Great excitement, there are babies, new Moore babies, there are eight new babies. Claire has had babies, so we have our little piglets just arrived about a week ago. But I actually wanted to share really quick how fabulous the, wonderful it is that the animals have really kind of like been a wonderful bridge of conversation with all the neighborhood as new things appear. And most recently, we were actually working with a nonprofit called the Six Foundation that works with veterans and PTSD and equine therapy and agricultural therapy, working kind of like as a liaison between Farmster and this organization. And through this cooperation, we were given Sergeant Diamond out there, that beautiful magnificent white horse, for the specific intention to be a catalyst for developing PTS, the sports medicine therapy program for veterans. So we're really excited about this concept and this idea, and in fact, it's rejuvenated a conversation that we started about this time last year with Sonoma State, looking for windows of opportunity to collaborate somehow there as well. And actually, so happens, the little girl I used to babysit is now the equine therapy lesson planner at Sonoma State, and we're going to be meeting tomorrow to see how we can maybe work together and pull our resources together. And we're just so happy to have the opportunity to have Sergeant Diamond out there, and to be reconnecting with our veteran community here in Kattati. So that was the update I wanted to get. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's our livestock integration and rotation program that we do out there. And then one of my more favorite ones is the community programs that we run. Here are four, a handful of our most notable ones, the Open Farm Fridays, I've called that a few times, the Farmer's Market. We had a really fun bottom right photo right there, Piglet Race, we had a couple different styles of races, but we have the community voice out there and a fun feature of the week article from that. In August, our featured event will be a classic egg toss, honoring the legacy of the chicken farm right across the street from the ranch. And then one of the things that we did quickly after college for another event called Farmer's Olympics, is we'll do melon bowling. So we cut the bottoms of squash off, you get a big melon, you roll it down a cardboard rollout square, and you go for a strike every time. So we're going to feature that in August. So plays into the theme of food waste, that's one of our core programs. The youth program, there's plenty of junior Farmster camp flyers here, and Parks and Rec Department right across the way. And I think we only got two or three spots left, it's $160 for the week. It's going to be July 29th through August 2nd. It'll be a lot of fun. Nancy will be our lead coordinator of the week, and then partnering with Parks and Rec is going to be as fun as always. And then lastly, Farm to Table series, that we're hoping to, to release this September as a one-year anniversary, and we've got some cool little poster flyers to show off. But we're trying to drive a little bit more membership on site. These Open Farm Fridays are great, and they build a lot of support. We've got a lot of appreciation for the work that we've been doing, but we're at the point where we're really trying to get some more contribution out of our neighbors. So we'll unveil those in a sec, they're hot off the press. Just for those that don't know or aren't totally aware of the sustainable measures we're trying to put in place out there, I mentioned our primary inputs for food waste that we have, and this plays into the larger composting program on site, but there's a great principle of 80%, 20%, buy your focus into those two buckets, and 80% of our food waste goes to those really amazing pigs over there, 20% is divvied up amongst those four other critters. Output resources, output resources would be education money, and then more volunteer support, which is always amazing, that people are asking and wanting to plug in or even donate their own food. We do ask that people don't feed their animals on site, as they've got plenty in their belly already. And then lastly, upcoming events, we like to forecast over a six-month period. We've got a number of dining donates that take place right after our Open Farm Fridays, so you literally got from 3:00 PM until about 7:30 PM to talk to us, give us your ideas, learn how to volunteer more, and contribute. A few others to call out once in would be the September 21st Farm to Table Members Event, as well as what I'm hoping is a Farmster Spook Fest, where we decorate the ranch a little bit, and then have some type of drop-in fee for people to go through a little spook fest, farm-themed. So it's a tradition I grew up with, and then there's all the Open Farm Friday dates, and that is my presentation. Let's see here, yeah, but we love Kattati, it's been an amazing six months. I learn something new every day out there. The saying I have with a lot of the younger kids and some of the parents is healthy food, healthy animals, healthy soils, and helping people. My contact information's at the bottom there. And then just want to show off what we, these few little, one for two, we've got these awesome blow-up posters here, the drive sub membership. We'll show them, and then we'll show you guys. Starts at $25 over there in the far end, and then increments up by 25 bucks per month. And this will help us with our costs from doing the food waste bucket, running animals out there, our community programs, and then lastly, that historical preservation and special projects and maintenance needed. So then this, and this will be at our Farmer's Market event, we're hoping to get some recent magazines next soon, that you can sign up for every council to get your tickets for us. Very soon. Thank you.
Great. Dustin, before you take off from there, I'm sure we have some, no, you can't run out. Hold on. I'm sure we have a few questions, so why don't I start at this end with Councilmember Moore? Any questions?
No, it sounds like it's going well.
Awesome, all right. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I drive by there quite a lot, seems like whenever I go anywhere, I have to go by, and there's always people talking to the animals and stopping, and it's really nice to see that community engagement. So I'm glad you guys are coming along, and it looks like things are progressing nicely. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Landman?
I think Councilmember Harvey hit the nail on the head. You must be working about 110%, because every time I drive by in the mornings, I'm going that direction, I look over, and there's Dustin. And half the time, for some reason, if I'm coming that back way in the evening, about double, there is Dustin. And I will say, when we do walk over here, because our little dog does drag us distraction sometimes, every time I do, I see the public. Sometimes they're inside with you on the Fridays, doing things, but often, they're just neighborhood folks, they're strolling, they're stopping, looking at the animals, they're stopping and talking to each other, and it's just clear to me what you're doing is very popular with not only the local neighborhood, but I think the whole community, and kind of really helping bring the community, add a little more community to it, giving people a place to gather and talk and enjoy things. So thank you for what you're doing. Looking forward to see where it goes. Thank you.
Yeah, Dustin, I echo all of my colleagues' comments. I do want to add a few things. It's, it was a little slow in starting up, but all startups are. I just called you a startup, that's pretty interesting. There could be a lot of money coming your way. Actually, I was thinking, the little promotional thing you had, you know, one way if you really want to do some kind of a fundraiser, going back to your egg toss, is if you have an egg throw, and you have council members or mayors up there. This could be something, it might be really popular, you might get a lot of money out of that one. So I'm just throwing that out there, it's up to you to decide.
Give it small.
It's great.
Intensity recreational use over there.
Understood, understood. I bring it on myself, what can I say?
No egg eating mayors.
It was, oh, no, no, mayors can be egged, but not at council meetings. Yeah, anyway. I know when my wife and I biked over to one of the Farm Fridays, it was just, it was a great event. a great event. I mean, the kids that were there, they were like, every time I turned around, there was more kids showing up. They're coming out of the barns, they're out of the ground. I don't know where they were coming from, but I mean, they had such interest and enthusiasm, and you also are kind of a rock star because a lot of them were repeats. You could, you know, they, you knew their names, they knew your name, they knew all the critters' names, so, great job. I know there's more in store for the future. You had a lot of plans just that day. You're saying, I want to do this, I want to do that, I want to do this. So, things will come, things will happen, and I think it's going great over there right now. And every time I come and have a meeting here at City Hall during the day with staff, that's all I hear about is, oh, you got to see the baby pigs over there. Oh, you got to see the baby goats over there. It's just, that's all these guys do is they stare out their windows. It's not true.
Doesn't have your meetings over there going forward.
You know, that's an idea, too. So, anyway, thank you again. It's great to get these updates from you, so appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will now go back to some semblance of order in these numbers here, and we're at item nine, which is the consent calendar. We did have some public comment on an item or two, and we have items A, B, C, D, E, and F. And I'll either entertain a motion or if there's any one that needs to be approved.
I would be happy to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second.
I thought you were going to pull him, pull one.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, please show a 401 vote in favor to approve the consent calendar. Thank you. All right, we are now at item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. Do we have any items that anybody, yes, council member?
Actually, I wouldn't mind seeing us take a look in one way or the other at the issue that Lisa Moore brought up in public comment today. Just having lived in the area for years, watched the pocket park, I think it was a wonderful idea, and a lot of good effort was put into it. I'm not sure if it's panned out exactly ideally as the intention was or in the interest of the neighborhood. And I do know we're taking a look at doing a lot of upgrades, improvements to the park this year. We're kind of in the middle of fitting this process. If there's time to fit that into that maybe, I would be happy to see that or have it come back for discussion at some point, because I do think something better might come at some point for that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, along those lines, it seemed that we renew that contract annually, that it might be worthwhile to have a discussion at that point to see what it is that we want to need out of that contract with Daily Axe. Maybe we need to change it, and maybe we need to change even just for a year or something just so we can take a look at it.
Yeah, I will say, you know, as small as that little area is, this weekend, we weeded the other side of the bridge where all the poppies and whatnot are, and it looks really good over there. But then, I went over to the other side, and I started to, you know, hand-pull weeds, and it's like, well, they got overwhelming in a hurry, because there were a number of clusters, but even just some of the individual tall milk thistle and things that were just super, super tall, deep roots. There's a lot of maintenance that has to go on there. As small as it looks, it's like, oh, we can do this, but you know, if Daily Axe is, if they don't have the person power to do that and to organize volunteer groups, then, you know, something to think about before we renew that contract. So, good point. Anything else, council member Moore?
No, that will help my household.
Understood. All right, thank you very much. All right, now, before we jump down to item 11, for those of you that might have come in a little bit late, we are moving item 12A, which is the Commercial Cannabis Permit Applications Review, up to this point right now. Then, we're going to go back to items 11A, B, and C, and then from that, 12B, C, and D. I know that doesn't make any sense, but bear with me, and I think we'll figure it all out. So, with that, we will go to the regular agenda item, and we'll go to item A. And I will turn that over to JP.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my name's John Paul Harries, Senior Planner with the City of Cattati. And this is regarding approving commercial cannabis permits. It begins on page 182 of your packet. So, just a little background, in 2017, the city approved a tax ordinance for commercial cannabis activities in the city. And then, in 2018, we issued an RFP for the first round of cannabis businesses. In that particular round, we received eight applications. Of those eight, three presently have active permits that are in the process of moving towards a functioning operation. Four of them were expired because of lack of progress on making any motion towards a functioning business, and one was withdrawn by the applicant. Earlier in the spring of this year, we issued a second RFP, and we received five applications. Of those five, three of them were bringing forward tonight. Two of them require a little more work. The three that we're looking at tonight are, really, the only thing that's interesting about them at all is that they're cannabis applications. In general, they're really benign operations. Almost all of them have to do with just processing, distributing, distributing and delivering of cannabis. So, one of the operations is at 481 Aaron Street. That's by Heritage Holding of California. Otherwise, they go by the name of Henry's Original. They have farms and work with other cultivators outside of Cattati. And here, they would bring the cannabis there to this location, process it, roll it, grade it, cure it, and package it for distribution. The other applications would take, there's two that would operate out of 471 Aaron Street. They're the same ownership group, but they operate under two separate LLCs in this case. One is involved in distribution. This is between various licensees, the delivery of cannabis products between various licensees. And then, the other operation that they would operate would be a delivery service, and they use a internet largely for that delivery service. Both of the facilities are sufficient for the activities that are proposed. There's really no unusual use of energy or water or odor problems with the proposed operations, and I think that's about it. At this point, I know the applicants are here, and if you have specific questions to them, I'd invite you to direct your questions there. And if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, City Manager. Did you have comments?
I was just going to add two things. One is that I believe at least one of the applicants has a short presentation that they may want to give, Heritage Holdings. And then, also, just after we move past the sort of batched RFP process that we've been doing for these first two rounds, the plan moving forward is to, is to have continuous applications after that until, you know, for the remainder of the permits that are remaining.
And part of the reason for putting these together was we didn't know, I'm assuming that we didn't know what kind of, you know, how many applications we could get. We didn't know if we'd get overwhelmed by it, which made perfect sense. So, now that we've winnowed through a couple of gyrations of this, you know, the staff is willing to sort of take them on one at a time as they come in.
Correct.
That makes perfect sense. Okay. Great, thank you. And so, we will open up in just a second. First of all, I just want to see if there's any questions from council for staff. I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
No, the only questions I have is I assume that we have notified the neighbors, and I was wondering if we had any concerns or comments regarding the other businesses around there?
Yes, we did send out mailings to all the neighbors. We did get two calls that wanted to remain anonymous and didn't want, and they just didn't like the idea of cannabis in the City of Cattati. We got two of those calls like that, yeah.
Okay, so not specific to those particular operations?
It was in response to the notices that were sent out with respect to these applications. So, but because they didn't want to disclose really who they were and what their concerns were, or identify themselves to the applicants, there wasn't much I could do about it.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Harvey?
I have no questions.
No questions? Councilmember Landman?
Yeah, thank you. I actually do have three questions that I probably want to ask both groups of applicants. Probably not really for staff, these would be more ones that you folks might be able to answer. So, first of all, I want to thank you. Good materials, very thorough, great read for us as a packet. Like when I look between these two offerings and looking anywhere potentially, when you're hopefully up and running, 60 to 100 new jobs eventually in Cattati, that's a wonderful thing. I saw some mention of Sonoma County preference for hiring. I wanted to ask if there would be any problem if we put the condition to have a preference first for Cattati hiring. And what I mean by that is if you have two applications, they're both the same, and one happens to be a local residence, if there would be problematic at all to give that person a preference?
Are you, are you asking the applicants that question?
The applicants, yes.
So, so what we'll do is, we'll have all the applicants come up, so keep that question in mind when you come up to make responses. We'd love to hear that.
That's probably better, and to give you a second to think about it, too, because that's one bad thing about this format, is we wind up springing things on you at the last minute a little bit, even if they're minor things. Next one is probably a little less minor, but still, I want to ask, so several you mentioned, Henry's Original mentions environmental consciousness and being certified as a Sonoma County green business. That's something that works well for Cattati and Cattatians. Fume, and excuse me, do I have that right? Am I pronouncing that good? I thought I saw the accent and gruff, but I wanted to check. You mentioned having a company focus on doing the right thing. So, I wanted to check about electrical providers. If you would be comfortable with the condition to be Sonoma Clean Power customers, or ideally Evergreen customers. Evergreen is the 100% renewable product they sell, and it does have a slight increase for your cost. It's about 2.5 cents, I think, a kilowatt hour. A typical residential user, maybe it's $15, $20 extra, but it does make a huge difference in GHT reductions. So, that's something I'd be interested in hearing from you, if that's something you're open to. And lastly, I think it'll be an easy one, because I think, I was actually reminded by Fume, and in your application, you mentioned having already joined the local Chamber of Commerce. Good to you. I wanted to ask our other applicant if you intend to join the local Chamber of Commerce and if you both will agree to remain members while you're doing business here in town. I think that, I think that's an easy one to ask, I hope. So, those would be my questions for you, and any answer you can give me tonight would be helpful. And if you want more information about the value, why I suggested Evergreen, I'd be happy to speak to that, too. But, other than that, I'll keep it short and be done for now.
All right, thank you very much. So, I think what we'll do is I will open up the public comment section, and I will call the applicants up, and you can come up and make a brief presentation. Notice I didn't use the word lengthy, I used the word brief presentation. You can interpret that any way you'd like. And then, to respond to any of the questions that you heard from council, we'll close that public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to council for decision and any further discussion with staff. So, with that, I will open the public hearing, and Heritage Holding, if you could come up. Are you the folks with, did you have a PowerPoint or something?
We do have a PowerPoint, yeah. I'm not too tech savvy, so I will. Great, thank you. Thank you for providing this opportunity. We are hopeful to become part of your community. My name's Josh Keats. I'm the co-founder and president of Henry's Original. My co-founder Jamie and I have been cannabis cultivators independently for about 15 years. We started Henry's Original in 2015 and rolled up our family farms into one company to focus on this project. That's us. We are a vertically integrated cannabis company. We hold nine active state licenses and five more in process. We have our own genetic development, nursery propagation, flower cultivation, processing, and distribution centers in Northern Mendocino. Additionally, we have world-class sales teams in both LA and the Bay Area. Our goal is to maintain cultivation in Mendocino County and bring all of our bulk flower down to Cattati for processing into our consumer packaged goods. We are the largest license holders in Mendocino County, and we've been lucky to have a positive and supportive relationship with the county regulators there. We produce high-quality flower products and are proud to be the number-two best-selling pre-roll in the state of California. We currently produce two distinct product types, prepackaged, hand-trimmed flower and pre-rolled cannabis smokes. We source our flower from over 30 family-owned farms in Mendocino, who are also clean green certified. It's a program akin to USDA organic certification. We go through the same rigor, however, USDA organic is a federal program, so we currently are not eligible. We plan to create over 60 jobs in two shifts in processing and packing. Additionally, we currently have an administrative staff of about 10 people, and we hope that that will continue to grow alongside the processing portion of our business. These are the proposed layouts. Probably a little small to see, but we will use a combination of automation and manual processing methods. None of our processes are energy-intensive, none of our processes involve volatile substances. We expect our resource usage to be less than the current business operating there. We can review these later if you want to blow them up. So, our plan from a high level, we will continue our cultivation in Mendocino County, do immediate post-harvest processing at our centers up there, and then bring all dried bulk cannabis down to Cattati for packaging and processing into our consumer packaged goods. And these will be brought to market by our third-party logistics providers. I want you to, thank you for considering our proposal. And in response, Councilman Landon, we are certainly willing to prioritize local hires in Cattati. Additionally, I would very much like to learn more about the clean energy. I could not commit 100% without knowing what the additional cost is, but we're, we are absolutely committed to renewables whenever possible.
Great. So, maybe before you take off, do we have any questions for him at this point? No, and no more questions from you at this point?
Yeah, it is difficult, obviously, to say. Perhaps the next step for us might be able to set up a meeting with you, with a staff person, with myself or a staff person from Sonoma Clean Power to take a look at your numbers, see what that looks like, and see, because if, since you're low in energy, not terribly energy-intensive, this might be something doable, might fit with your corporate culture, and we can take a look at that. Thank you for the openness, I appreciate that, and thank you for looking for Cattati, for bringing your business here. We appreciate that, too.
And good job ending a PowerPoint with a picture of a dog.
You can't go wrong.
You get a couple of extra points for that one, as far as I can see. All right, thank you. And if we have more questions, we'll call you back up as well, so. And I don't know if I should call you Fume or Clear Lake.
Fume.
Fume, okay.
My name is Alyssa Hambrecht, and I'm the COO of Fume. My partner Eric Flar is our CEO. I want to start by thanking you for the ordinance. You are the leaders in California, ushering in a very important moment for our state. The black market is still very prevalent, and it's largely because of local jurisdictions that are anti-ordinance. So, I'd like to first thank you for your progressiveness in bringing the industry here. I'd like to thank staff for running a great process and the city manager, very helpful, transparent process all along the way. Like our neighbors right next door, very excited to work next to them should we be successful and get the license. We are a vertically integrated company. We manage the business from cultivation through retail, currently in Lake County. We use our retail non-storefront license in Clear Lake to do fulfillment for Ease.com. Ease is a, the Amazon of cannabis, the largest legal retail channel in the world, we believe. And so, we are bringing existing business. Currently, we service Marin, Sonoma Counties from Lake County, and we're very excited with the massive efficiency that we gain by bringing our business here to Cattati. And I'm sorry that you've given licenses and then suffered from businesses not getting off the ground. That's, I think, an advantage of both of your candidates today. We bring existing revenues, and we're excited to pay taxes here. Yes, we are happy to do clean energy from, to answer your direct question, the green, I forget the name, I'm sorry.
Evergreen.
Evergreen. We are happy to give employees from Cattati a leg up. We are happy to give employees from Catati a leg up when we're looking at potential candidates, and the Chamber of Commerce check. We're happy to answer any other questions as well.
Well, you went through those way, way too quick, but you answered them correctly. I'm going to start at this end, Councilmember Landon, any questions?
Actually, it was too quick for me, I didn't quite catch what you were saying about Evergreen.
Oh, we're happy to get our power from Evergreen.
Beautiful, I think I just saw a representative from Sonoma Clean Power actually walk in the back, so if anybody has questions, that would be the person to talk to, and I thank you very much.
Certainly.
Yes, indeed, so thank you for doing business here.
Any questions on the side of the table? Councilmember Harvey?
No questions.
No questions, Councilmember Moore?
I may have missed it in the packet in going through that, but I am hoping that there are provisions and principles regarding living wages for the employees.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Excellent, okay, I don't think at this point I have any further questions, yes, please.
I'm just going to be the back capper, rather, proof for you, there is one error in the resolutions, in the second resolution, it mentions both companies instead of just saying Clear Lake, so in the second paragraph under the resolutions, the second resolution you'll see Fume Growth Fund, that one word Fume should change to Clear Lake, just so we have it accurate.
Thank you, that's an important point.
Just Clear Lake, thank you.
Important point to catch, thank you for that. Okay, so the public comment period is still open, are there any, any folks who would like to comment on what you've heard? Ms. Alderman?
I repeatedly asked over the last six months for updates on the cannabis permits in businesses, and you said nothing. And then last Friday, we get an agenda packet with all of this, I just wanted to point that out. There was eight permits done last year, and you, none of them built, so, and you didn't even deal with that, you didn't, I asked you to do an impact of that delay, to study that, not a word. Nevertheless, I am happy with the three new applicants, I like that they're on Aaron Street in Blodgett, and that they're middlemen, not growers mostly, and those are good, I still have questions about the traffic for Red's dispensary, because that still is very dangerous there, when I go to my vet, which is nearby to take my cat, it's like risking my life, and people be risking their life to go get their cannabis on Red's dispensary. But other than that, I'm, oh, the other thing, you're not also considering, Santa Rosa has like twenty some, it's got a whole map of dispensaries, you're not considering the whole process of how many people are coming into this build, this business, and that we might have already missed the vote because of the not having the eight permits going through last year to building, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and I'm also wondering from a staff perspective, I think this is good information to share with the public, the process, and kind of, you know, not who specifically was involved, but like department-wise, who was involved and how decisions were made, I'd like to know that, you know, the chief or representative from the police department is content with security-related issues like we have been with Mercy Wellness, they've been here eleven years or so in the city, and we've really not had problems, and they've been great to work with, so, I don't know if it's Damian or JP, one of you want to sort of, just in that thirty thousand-foot level, addressing it?
So all, all department heads are involved in the process, so engineering, administration, community development, and the police department, as well as Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District is, all review the applications, oh, and our building department, excuse me. So I would say it's, it's got the, you know, pretty well-rounded review with, which everyone is involved. We do go through a process of scoring them, if the applications were competitive, we would compare them to one another, we, we evaluate them for completeness in terms of the RFP and, and conformance with the ordinance, and then I guess if you want to speak specifically to security, but what you don't see in here is some of the security information that was provided to us, we keep that confidential, so that's why it's not in your packet. Additionally, they, before we will issue a zoning certificate for this and allow the operation to begin, there will be a final security plan that they will have to work through, to the D, through, you know, dotting all the Is and crossing all the Ts with the chief of police, so we don't do anything unless we're confident on the security.
Yeah, and, and my issue is not to find out where all of their cameras are or anything like that tonight, it's more like, you know, what, what they've provided us at this point, we're content with, it's kind of, that's kind of what I'm looking for from you, so I'll let the chief talk to that issue.
So I, I have reviewed the, the plans that were submitted so far, they're workable, there, there are going to be some improvements that I'm going to recommend as this moves along, and I won't be signing off on it until those recommendations are met.
Okay, no, that's, that's fair enough, and city manager, did you want to add anything? No? No, okay, great, so with that, why don't we go around the table, and I will start with Councilmember Harvey, any questions, comments?
Just comments.
Okay.
So it was mentioned by one of the applicants that they thanked us for the ordinance, it was a long and hard process, one of the more difficult things that we as a community have gone through. Having said that, we got through that, and we have had Mercy Wellness here, as was pointed out, for some eleven years. They have set the bar pretty darn high, and they have been a wonderful addition to our community, and we have not had any problems that I'm aware of with that, so the bar is pretty high for you guys. I appreciate all the detail that was in your submittals, that's why I didn't have any questions, I think you covered like all the Ts and Is and all the dots and everything. I was extremely pleased even to see the detail on the delivery, the care that you take for your drivers as employees to make sure that, that they are safe also, it's one thing to be, you know, on-site and, and have all of that there, but when people are out traveling, you take extra care there, so I appreciate that, but hopefully this will work out for everyone, and thank you for your submissions.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore?
I do not have any further questions.
Excellent, and Councilmember Landon?
Yeah, I'm just, again, going to agree a second time tonight, we're agreeing a lot, but I'm going to agree with my colleague, as I said earlier, I was very impressed with the presentation that you gave us, and answer to the staff request for proposals, and I guess it's unsurprising, because the people who've succeeded in this particular industry talk about high bar, the various challenges you've had to face to make successful business, it's not surprising, you pay attention to detail, you do the things you need to, to ensure success, and, and it's really, I think, I hope you can see, that's what we're looking for in this town, that's the goal, you may note that we're starting out very minimal, compared to our friends at the state, certainly, with our tax rates, and I believe, like, you know, I think I can speak all for us, the goal is, we want to start something that's a mutually beneficial relationship, that you'll be long-term healthy business partners in this community, be able to set down roots and hopefully grow, and at the same time, benefit our community in ways both small and large, hopefully, so that's the direction. There's small things about Catati, you probably already picked up that we like to ask for, that you know will benefit you to do here, but overall, we're looking for something that works long-term, so that's why I'm not surprised to see the quality of the applications, and I'm hoping this is what I'll be able to see come from this work and, and your interest in being here, so. So I think you can guess I'll be supportive tonight, I might have tipped my hand a little bit, apologies.
Well, you did by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you did, but that's okay, we're not quite there yet, just a couple of points I want to bring up, I'm really concerned about that whole black market issue, I, I figured it was, it's still out there, I just have no concept of how prevalent it is, but I do know firsthand the damage it does to the environment, when there's illegal grow sites out there, I've experienced them, I've been in them, I've seen horrific scenes inside of them, and I, I really hope in this great state that we've gotten our act together, the jurisdictions don't have too high of a tax, ours is scalable for, you know, the first few years it's stable, and then it's scalable, you know, I really hope this works out, and I hope that we're all learning as we move along, and that we're going to do the right thing. I also, you know, I, I started in, I don't want to say I'm a politician, because I'm not, but I started on my city council back in the mid-nineties, I believe, I never thought I would be sitting here approving or not, you know, cannabis grow sites and manufacturing and distribution, it's just furthest thing from my mind about twenty-five years ago, but here we are, here we are, and what we are doing at this point, this evening, is it's sounding like we, we have some information that we've gotten from everybody, which is great, the staff report was great, applications were very well-filled out, but we're looking now for a resolution that does need an edit, we don't want to miss that part, I think staff captured that already, so we're good there, so if someone in the council is willing to do that.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the permits to the qualified operators with the correction to the resolution that I think JP has.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a four oh one vote, and congratulations to both businesses, or all three businesses, I'm not quite sure how to address you guys, but, but everybody who did apply and got them approved this evening, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you guys. All right, now, we're doing something, it is, this isn't strange enough for me as it is, that was item twelve A, now we're going backwards to eleven A, and that is the Catati Village Vesting Tentative Map Extension, and I believe JP, that might be yours as well.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, again, my name's JP Harris, I'm with the, senior planner with the city of Catati, and this item begins on page fifty-five of your packet. Tonight's staff is recommending, shall I wait? Are we ready?
Close that door.
We're good, what was?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's just background noise, we'll, we'll get them to move.
Okay, um, so page fifty-five of your packet, this is consideration of an extension for a vesting tentative map that the city council approved in two thousand and seven. The, the map is for Catati Village, Catati Village is a seven point eight-two acre site, which is a portion of a larger thirty-acre site, which, which is called Catati Commons, which includes the Lowe's existing development, as well as the Catati cottages, the existing development that's out there. This particular map is, has forty-three residential units and three commercial buildings on it. It's been, like I said, it was approved in June of two thousand and seven, and right before the economy changed, and there's been this whole series of extensions, the legislature has, through a series of senate bills and assembly bills, has had multiple statutory extensions, which automatically extended the life of the map, and this map has come before the council three previous times. This last year has largely been working with Caltrans, which is a process, to, to get the intersection at Alder Lane and Highway one sixteen worked out. I'm happy to report that we, that, that, that work is done, and we expect to be bringing the application, or the Catati Village design review to, for public hearings in August, so we are right that, right there now, and however, this map expires on June thirteenth, it's still valid while we are considering the map, so it's, we're recommending that you approve the extension, so that we can bring the application forward in, in August for, for design review consideration, and it will be coming to city council because of the map that, that is part of the project. I think with that, I will stop, I saw that the applicant is here, if there's any questions for the applicant, you can direct them there, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Great, thank you very much, any questions for staff? No, no, and Councilmember Landon?
One quick one, this was a question from the public, I understand that there's been many years of concern about several of the turns in Highway one sixteen, and particularly the one into West Catati, what would be the trigger for upgrades to that? I would imagine that would be the improvement of sale of the larger piece of property that remains, but if you could speak just a little to that, because I know it's a concern for a lot of people.
Yeah, the, West Catati would be approved, would be improved as part of the, the larger four-lane widening of one sixteen, that's been planned forever, and it wouldn't necessarily be triggered by the marketplace, which is the larger one, it depends on whether they ultimately choose an interim access location, or what's in the general plan as the final access location. So the general plan, final access location, would involve re-aligning West Catati, along with the four-lane highway there, but if they do an interim, interim access, then it, it wouldn't, it would likely not involve the realignment of West Catati yet.
So then, while commercial development may help with some of those issues, ultimately for that, we're really kind of, I use this term, at the mercy of Caltrans a little bit, it will depend on when that particular project goes forward at that level?
It's, it's likely that Caltrans will be leading the ultimate widening, we, you know, project by project, we'll be doing improvements that'll help further that goal, but I think ultimately it'll probably be Caltrans that'll be the ultimate widening.
Well, good, thank you for the reminder, that's helpful.
All right, now, did you have a question formed? Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right.
So could you explain a little bit more about alternative entrances without that? Are you implying that they won't be entering from Grammontstein Highway, they'll enter from, say, Alder or something like that? With not triggering any changes? Can you elaborate a little bit more? Because I can't tell from these maps very well.
Right, I think, I think maybe Craig or JP could follow up on this, but, but basically, in the interim condition, Alder would remain as a street that goes into Highway one sixteen, and as part of this project or the village project, whichever one leads the development, there would be a turn pocket and some shoulder work added at one sixteen and Alder to allow safer egress and ingress to that, to Alder Lane.
I think I read in there that there would be a right turn lane to get off going towards Sebastopol onto Alder, and then a left turn lane sort of coming towards Catati to get into Alder, is that?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
Thought I read.
I, I, I don't, I can't speak to whether there's an access directly off of one sixteen as well, but I do know that there's at least one on Alder.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, I know the questions for staff, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and let me first have Mr. Monahan, if you have anything.
I don't have anything to say, if you have any questions.
Great, perfect, okay, anyone from the public? Ms. Alderman?
I wanted to remind you that the tentative map is based on the mitigation and everything from two thousand and seven, and the last time I talked to the state wildlife services, they were going to, because it hasn't been developed in over a decade, they were going to challenge your mitigation and everything, because keep putting these tentative maps without checking that there are tiger salamanders there again, once again, it's just putting it on. They, they were fine with the hotel, they were fine with the sewer project, but they were not fine with anything, and it is one, within one point five of miles of the, of the breeding ground on Stony Point, so it's under special. it's under special, special regulations too. So you need, you need to take into account that keep saying, it's, you need to update things, make sure that you're up with the state wildlife and just not say the conditions are, have not changed, which you keep doing every time you do this tentative map. Because this SEQA office is going to come down on you guys for, you've done it on many projects, but especially this one, on proving tentative maps for over a decade, that are a decade old, rather than dealing with the current situation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And anyone else with comments on this? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. And I don't know if staff or the applicant has any updated information on that last comment that was made. If you don't, you don't, but.
No, conditions haven't changed.
All right, very good.
There's comments.
There's comments about that in, in the actual report.
Right, and if you want to just point that out publicly, that would be helpful.
Yeah, publicly on page 57, it says, "Current biological condition assessment was completed to determine if the character of any portion of the subject site has changed since approval of vesting tentative map in 2007. The assessment concluded that there have been no changes to the character of the project site or its surrounding and that no areas exhibited wetland hydrology. The assessment also concluded that no breeding habitat for the California tiger salamander exists on the property and that there are no vernal pool habitats that could support state or federal listed plants and/or other special status plants on the project site. No other changes have occurred to the site or its surroundings, which would result in the applicability of other regulations to the project. Both the biological conditions assessment and the previously approved grading plans are available for review in the community development department." And that's right in the report, so I think that that's been addressed.
Certainly seems that way. All right, thank you for pointing that out. Did you have any further comments or questions, council member?
No, other than, this is pretty typical that there are extensions. There was the ones because of the recession and those were special legislation items, but then I, the number will escape me, but I think that we are, have the ability to do six extensions, I believe is the number. So this is, this is the fourth one. So we are within what it is that we are charged to do with this request.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, any questions or comments? Nothing, thank you. And councilmember Lammon?
So, Mr. Monahan, congratulations. It looks like you're making it with two years to spare. Seriously speaking, actually, long process for everybody. It's been trying to develop over the last decade in this city and any other city in this county or state. So looking forward to seeing that area show some good improvement, I think, in the next few years potentially. So congratulations on that.
All right, having said and heard that, I have no further questions. Do you have something, Dan? You can do both.
As some folks realize or don't realize, oftentimes dealing with Caltrans and the state is not exactly an easy thing to do. So thank goodness for all the work that was, been done probably by lots of people to get a resolution for that. And I look forward to seeing more progress on this. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution granting one 12-month time extension to the Catati Village vesting tentative map, inclusive of all previously adopted conditions of approval, resulting in a new expiration date of June 13th, 2020.
I'll second.
You'll second that.
Two seconds.
Two seconds, that's how it should be. Any further discussion?
Redundant.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show 401 vote on that to move it forward. Thank you. We're now at item 11B, which is a resolution to approve the engineer's report, confirm the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts, and levying and collection of the annual assessments for the Catati landscaping and lighting assessment district for fiscal years 2019 to 2020. Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, other works director, city engineer. The city has a landscaping and lighting district with 10 zones created from 1989 to 2003 to pay for costs of maintaining landscaping and streetlights within those developments. In accordance with the landscaping and lighting act of 1972, there's a strict process to approve assessments annually. Tonight's meeting is a third of three council meetings for the fiscal year 1920 assessment process. And we are to conduct a public hearing and then consider a resolution to, a single resolution, which approves the engineer's report and authorizes the levying and collection of annual assessments that's set forward in the engineer's report. The report presents expenses and revenue and tracks the reserve balance in each of the zones. The reserves are used for periodic, are used for the, the regular routine maintenance activities. I'm, I'm sorry. The reserves are used for the capital expenses that come up from time to time to replace plants or if there is diseased or sick trees that pose a hazard, to remove those trees and replace them, repair the irrigation systems, et cetera. These are just periodic, higher than normal expenses. So it's just a technique, a tool for us to help manage the budgets of these zones. The recommendation tonight is for the council to hold the public hearing and then consider adopting the resolution on page 71 of the packet. So that concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? I don't know why I've been looking this way the first time, every time. I will promise to look in this direction first next time. Any questions for staff?
No.
No questions, all right. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring you back for council action.
Okay, so I will make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the annual engineer's report, confirming the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts, and authorizing and levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2019-20 for the Catati landscaping and lighting assessment districts for zones 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 pursuant to the landscaping and lighting act of 1972.
I'll second that.
It was really a long motion.
It's really much better than when we had to do this 10 times.
We had to do it 10 times.
So thank you so much.
Totally agree with that.
Much more efficient.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 401 vote. And we will move to item 11C, master fee schedule updates and changes. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and Lauren for this item. So I'll just keep it brief. We introduced this item on June 11th and there was a couple kind of late questions that came up, so we opened the public hearing and we continued it till tonight on this item. You'll see that there's two copies of the fees for city services and rental charges in the packet. One has red line strikeout, so you can see what's changed, and then one's a clean copy. And the changes are all pretty minor, but again, this is the first, this was the first year that we've had a fully consolidated service fee schedule, just for ease of use for both staff and for the public. And the idea is that each year we would just come back as a matter of course around this time of year, make sure everything's still current and make any adjustments that need to be made at that time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, very good. Any questions? Councilmember Lammon, looking at you first. Any questions in this direction for staff?
No.
Nothing? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And no one cares to speak on this, so I will go ahead and close that public hearing and bring you back to council for an action.
I'd like to move a resolution updating the master schedule of fees and charges for city services with additions to engineering and public works and minor changes to the administrative services and the police department fee schedules.
Second?
All right, a motion is second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show another 401 vote in favor to move that forward. Thank you very much. And now we are going down to item 12B, since we've already taken care of A, which is Evergreen electric mix for municipal operations. I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we do have two representatives from Sonoma Clean Power here tonight. Nathan is going to do a presentation on, on our current energy mix as well as what we're talking about tonight, which is referred to as Evergreen. Our current mix is called Clean Start, which is the default opt-in energy mix. And even, I will say, even with the default energy mix, it's on average less expensive than the alternative, which is a PG&E energy mix, and also has a greater portfolio of renewable power and lower greenhouse gas emission profile. So, so we're already, just, just by virtue of being a, you know, subscribing to Sonoma Clean Power's energy mix, the Clean Start energy mix, we're already a leg ahead. And tonight is the discussion about Evergreen. And Evergreen would be the fully renewable power portfolio, not totally greenhouse, not totally free of all greenhouse gases, but Nathan will get into that in a minute. But I guess with that, we can come back to me after the presentation, but I'll hand it off to Nathan to do his thing. Thank you.
Thank you. How close I got to get to this?
Relatively close.
All right. Well, thank you for having me, Mayor, and the other members of the city, and obviously the council. So what we're talking about today is in terms of the city making the switch over to our 100% local, 100% renewable product Evergreen. The city is currently on our Clean Start product, but we'll dive into that just a little bit deeper. Let me make sure I can get this going the right way. Doesn't matter which way I point at it, no. Okay. So this slide is a little outdated, I recognize, but to date, in terms of the existing operations for community choice programs throughout the state, there are about 19 that are up, operating or actively investigating their launch, which may come out in the next year or so. Sonoma Clean Power was the second community choice program to launch in the state of California, and we launched in 2014, primarily servicing to our commercial customers in that original launch and then rolling out to other communities that were investigating whether or not they wanted to join. Happy to say that Catati was an early adopter in that process. So in terms of community choice, I mean, I'm sure there's probably a lot of questions you might have and maybe you are well aware of what the program is and how it operates. But basically, if you take a look at this slide, Sonoma Clean Power represents the generation service for the city and for all of our customers. PG&E, the investor-owned utility in our territory, still operates the grid. And so the way that works is the electrons that are being put into their infrastructure, we are procuring a cleaner source of power for those electrons, and those are going to our customers. So from our generation, it feeds into PG&E's infrastructure, and then that gets shipped over to various locations, service points for all of our customers in our territory. So in terms of our agency overall, I would say that, well, for me now, it's not exactly a new operation. It might be relatively new for a large majority of people that aren't really paying attention to the energy scheme of things. However, we're technically a new type of agency. We're self-funded, we don't have any tax dollars that go into our operations. And currently, we have no debt at all. We were created in the early 2000s, relates to the energy crisis that was taking place in California during that time period, recognizing that we're coming into another energy crisis in a way, as of late, in the last couple of years, the result of the fires. And that will still obviously be something for our, our program as well as other programs in the state to be looking at in the coming years. But basically, we're, we're operating a choice for our customers, competition, and local power control in our marketplace. In terms of the territories that we serve currently, we're operating everywhere in Sonoma County except for in the city of Healdsburg. City of Healdsburg has a municipal utility, as well as up in Mendocino County, which we launched and started offering service to that county in 2017. And except for the city of Ukiah, because they also have a municipal utility as well. So in terms of our products, we have two products that we offer directly. Our default product is known as Clean Start. It's currently comprised of 49% renewable power, and it represents about half the emissions compared to PG&E's power service. It's through the default, so as soon as a customer were to move into our territory or if we were to offer our services to a new jurisdiction, this would be the automatic service that a customer would automatically receive. Should a customer like to maintain their, their existing operations with PG&E exclusively, they would just need to contact us directly and make the decision to opt out and go back to PG&E. In terms of our rates that we're offering for, for this service, as of this current fiscal year, which for us ends at the end of June, and will be launching our next fiscal year, 2019, 2020, in July, our rates are about 2% more, or excuse me, less expensive than PG&E's. And obviously, we're available to anyone, should they move into the county or if they're actively provided service by PG&E, they could contact us to make that switch to go into our service for their generation. As far as Evergreen service, which is the primary reason that I'm here to talk to you guys today, Evergreen's a 100% local renewable option. It's currently composed primarily of geothermal, but we've added local solar into that mix. It does come at a premium, it's about a two and a half cent or a two and a half cent per kilowatt hour premium. This is a program that is available to all residential, commercial, municipal, industrial customers, and customers can contact us anytime to sign up for it. In terms of the power sources that we have in our mix, this is some new information that I just got from our procurement team. The way that reporting goes for power companies is a little wonky in terms of fiscal year timing. However, we just got this, this data back in, and this is a look at our 2018 power sources, so basically last year's composition of the power that we had. And it's made up, and actually this, oh, it does have it on there, awesome. So in terms of renewable service, we do have the 18% geothermal, 8% solar, 23% wind. The 0% biomass just represents, it's less than 1% of biomass that's in the portfolio. The other 42% of this is large-scale hydropower, but California doesn't qualify it as a, California qualified renewable source, so it's excluded out of that category. And it's also composed of the KISO system power of about 9%, which is something that can't be tied directly to a source, but it basically has the same emissions factor as natural gas. And in terms of our Evergreen, so that was our Clean Start product on our Evergreen side that we're talking about today, it's made up of 84% geothermal and about 16% of solar, and this is coming from some of our new profit feed and tariff projects in the county. We have three megawatts online of that solar right now. Primarily, that is located in the outskirts of Petaluma, and we have some new projects coming online. I think they're going to be, one of them is about a megawatt, should come online in the fall of 2019, and we have two megawatts, more than likely going to come online in the first quarter of 2020. So we'll have about six megawatts of in-county solar into the mix. So we'll have about six megawatts of in-county solar into the mix for our Evergreen product. So in terms of the numbers, you know, this represents a very large reduction in greenhouse gas emissions for the city. These numbers, from one year to the next, will change, obviously, because the amount of renewable power we have in our portfolio, the different source types, it's going to basically look a little different from one year to the next, and it's going to, obviously, hopefully, get a little bit better every year. So the emissions reduction that we have forecasted for the city to be about 52,420 pounds of CO2, and this is a tremendous reduction. It's probably the greatest single reduction any entity, let alone a community, can make, and something that can happen very quickly. As far as the process goes, communication to meter or to staff in terms of identifying the accounts that they'd like to switch over to be on Evergreen service, it usually happens the next month. Just depends on how close we are to that individual account or accounts meter read date. If it's within about a week period, sometimes it has to go through the remainder of that next billing cycle before it can roll on into the Evergreen service. So the emissions factor data that we have is associated with our 2017 figures. I don't have the 2018 data available yet that I got from my 2017, from my procurement team. So as soon as we have that information, I'd be happy to deliver that to you, so you can have a look at that as it relates to any types of changes that you guys make for your city accounts. But our emissions factor on Clean Start, 127.98 pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour, is a large difference compared to the data that was just recently announced by PG&E. Their 2017 emissions factor for their service is 210 pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour, so it's a dramatic difference. Making that switch to Evergreen, you're going to be resulting in 53 pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour, and that's primarily a result of the geothermal operations. There are some fugitive emissions associated with that particular source of energy, so it isn't 100% clean in terms of the GHG emissions, but it's a very small fraction by comparison. In terms of over time savings, you know, when we originally launched in 2014 and into 2015, we set our rates to be about a 5% reduction by comparison to PG&E. That continuously got better as we moved forward in different years, and these are, you know, it says 6% to 9%. There were some customers that were receiving the 13%, 14% discount by comparison to PG&E, but I just wanted to skew a little bit more in favor of the general average. We had some customers that were on a single rate class that isn't typical of a large majority of our customers, but the largest majority did experience that 6% to 9% savings in 2015 to 2016. In 2016 to 17, that changed dramatically, primarily a result of the power charge indifference adjustment fee that PG&E imposes on our customers. So that adjust, that change and that large increase kind of forced our agency to reevaluate the rate savings that we could offer to customers. So that reduction dropped to about 2%, and then in 2017, 2018, the PCAA fee continued to be an impact to us, but we were continually able to make this reduction in our overall operations and our costs for our customers, and they were able to benefit from about a 1% rough average for savings. Currently, in 2018, which we're about to end, we're experiencing a 2% reduction in savings, and forecasting out to our next fiscal year, we're looking at about a 1% savings. And those are all based on the rates that are being compared to PG&E at that point in time. PG&E does have a tendency to make different rate changes throughout the year, and so we see our percentage improve at different times of the year, depending upon what PG&E does with any type of change they make to their rates. So overall, we have a very large reduction in greenhouse gas emissions compared to PG&E, and the city would benefit from that reduction in terms of making this decision to change As far as the greenhouse gas emissions goals that the city has in the Climate Action Plan 2020 and beyond, this is a very quick and easy step that the city can make to make a very large impact to the municipal operations and contribute towards meeting various climate goals that the city has. As far as programs that we offer, I put a little bit of information in there just to sort of give you a glimpse about the way that our agency has evolved over time. We currently have, well, we just finished operating our electric vehicle incentive program, and it was in the third year of that operating. I think the total number was about 1,200 EVs that we had go through that program and participate that are operating on the roads in Sonoma County and some in Mendocino County as well. Beyond the electric vehicle program, we had a charging incentive to buy charging equipment for those vehicles. In results of the October wildfires, we've launched our Advanced Energy Rebuild, or AER program, to help incentivize customers looking to rebuild after the fires. We're operating our Grid Savvy program, our induction cooking program, our toolkits for local libraries, our Net Green Energy program for onsite renewables, as well as getting ready to launch our LEED Locally grant with our new office space that's going to be opening up in the fall of this year in downtown Santa Rosa. And obviously, we're looking to see what we can do to further evolve every year, and I'm sure we will. So in a summary, in terms of the benefits of Sonoma Clean Power's service, it's giving community members a choice, a choice that nobody ever had before. We're offering cleaner electricity to those of our customers who want to participate in that. We have lower greenhouse gas emissions compared to PG&E. We have very competitive rates. We're a local not-for-profit. We have local programs, and we have local control in terms of our agency's operations. And on that, I think I'll just open it up to questions in general, because I figured that would probably be the most substantive for this presentation.
We could surprise you not to have any questions.
Okay.
But it's highly unlikely. So, you know, I do want to say, I mean, we're really proud as a council that we did offer, because that's what we did. We offered people a choice when Sonoma Clean Power first came online, and it's an opportunity. You can either stay with this program, but what we, what we really wanted to do was to offer that option to our citizens. Whether they took it or not, that was up to them, right? But that's, to not even give them that option would have been, in my opinion, a real crime. So I'm really excited that we did do that, and now we have an opportunity, as a municipality, to do something very unique. Now, I believe the city of Sonoma is Evergreen. Are there any other cities in the county?
No, currently, there's not. The city of Sonoma made the switch back in, I want to say it was the later portion of 2016, but they are the only operating municipality.
Yeah, which makes me think that the city manager and I need to work on a press release, that the second city in Sonoma County, by the way, the smallest city in Sonoma County, is now 100, going, well, we haven't voted yet, but should we go in that direction? I've got the caption in the headline for it, but that remains to be seen. Do we have any questions for Nathan at this point in time? I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Of course you will. The only question I had is, in light of the source being solar and the remainder being geothermal, is there a possibility at some point down the road that we could reach maximum capacity or?
Maximum capacity in terms of?
Well, maximum deliverables. I mean, if geothermal, I mean, if you have enough customers that come online, could you get to a point where you would say we can't offer any more Evergreen?
I would say that's probably highly unlikely, I think, for the most part. You know, the geothermal we get right here from the Geyser's facility, I do believe there are other active wells. Should we, you know, need to procure more electricity from them directly, they could tap into those wells and add that into our service. I'm not exactly 100% sure on the operational functionality of each individual well, as far as the output of energy that it produces, but I don't foresee that becoming an issue, really, anytime soon, let alone in the long-term future.
Thank you.
But I'd say that I could check back on the particulars of that to get you a more definitive answer, for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hardy?
I have two questions. The first one is, you mentioned that hydro power isn't considered in California renewable. Is it considered renewable in other states? Are we an outlier, or?
Oh, I think it is considered renewable in other states. I don't know exactly which state that would be, but yeah.
Okay, all right. And my second question is, is, you know, we've had a time period now where the customers have had Sonoma Clean Power, and I remember originally, because of the way the law worked, they had to put in, to be Sonoma Clean Power and opt back out if that's what they desired. Do you have any insight into any percentages on number of folks that have switched back?
Back to PG&E?
Mm-hmm. Just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I do. I think currently, right now, we operate at about an 89% retention rate in Sonoma County, and in Mendocino County, it's about an 80% retention rate. And a lot of the difference between the two counties, we think, has a lot to do with, well, obviously, there's different particularities from each county, but I think a lot of the long-term investment to PG&E comes from a lot of the storms that take place in Mendocino County, and the fact that they have a lot of local PG&E servicemen and women out into that community, and there is a very stronghold in terms of their community's love for those members of their community, for very good reasons. I think there's also a lot of opportunity for our agency to do more public outreach, to get the message out there, and continue to work on improving that retention rate.
Great, thank you.
Now, Councilmember Landman, I don't know how familiar you are with Sonoma Clean Power, which we can talk offline afterwards, but if you have any questions?
If I have any questions, I'll ask.
Thank you.
First of all, it's kind of fun seeing you here, Nate. There's a little change of pace for both of us here. But yeah, first of all, just a couple of comments, then I do have a question for you, which kind of relates to this. In terms of capacity, that's actually a great question. I think, number one, for both midterm and probably long-term, we're good, but also, by the point, we could get to a point where we outgrow the available capacity. In that future, with a little luck, you're going to have storage, cost-effective storage, which is already just getting to the customer now. And once you have that, then you can combine that with wind and solar, and you lose the problem with peaking, and the need and value won't be as strong. So, in other words, Evergreen is set to grow when we get to that point. So that's part of what's happening right now with power. So we're very fortunate to have this power source in our county. It's the perfect bridge to the future, but when the future comes, it won't be quite as necessary, so we'll have the option to take care of whatever needs we have. And yeah, it is a little weird sometimes to look at dams being large hydro, not being considered green, but, you know, building dams has its environmental aspects that are problematic. But the key point that people miss about our mix and that large 40.7% that is high, big, large hydro, that is carbon-free, and people miss that sometimes. It's a huge part, and that speaks to, the mix of power actually makes a difference, or advantages have. People miss that. And that leads me to the question, I want to ask you to speak just very briefly to some of the advantage of the balance of this particular power mix in terms of being able to use for these years, this middle ground we're in right now, using that hydro, excuse me, that geothermal, to be able to avoid using peaking power plants, for example. Because I think that's a big thing, and I don't know if the public or most of us really appreciate how important that is and what an ideal situation is, because it really speaks to the amount of reduction we get from it. It's hard to do better than that, and I think this is a key reason for it.
The reason in terms of being able to leverage the geothermal? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly. What I was asking you, just talk a little about, I've heard Mr. Cypher's talk about this numerous times. Basically, the interesting thing, you can keep adding more green power. You can get all the solar, all the wind you want, but right now, that's peaking power. It blows and shines at certain times, and when it does and it doesn't. And as we grow more demand, because more and more people are using those green sources, when it isn't shining or blowing, power has to come from somewhere, and that means the bad secret, we're probably investing in more gas-fired, natural gas-fired plants, which ideally would be a great thing not to be planning and growing more of those at this point. We want to be looking going the other direction. And I just wanted to kind of have you expand on, I think I've already now kind of done it, probably, but I think that's the key thing that the public should know. It's not just that this has huge greenhouse gas reductions. It does, but in terms of the mix, it also leads us to a future where we don't need to do that, and that's probably even more important, so.
Yeah, the operational capacity within geothermal as a baseload resource means that it operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, compared to solar or wind that only operates when that existing resource is available, when the sun's shining, the wind, the wind's blowing. Geothermal's always operating, so if we were to increase the geothermal, the number of customers on Evergreen, to increase geothermal as a supply within that structure, although we want to diversify Evergreen overall, it's great because it's continuously happening. There isn't any other type of source of energy factored into that mix. So to your point, Evergreen, in terms of operating primarily on geothermal, is great in terms of that long-term, continuous operation of renewable energy.
Good, thank you.
And I do have one question for you. When you were talking about the rate savings over time, and you had a whole bunch of years listed, were you guys, did you calculate into that increases by PG&E to the customers?
Meaning, was that the final percentage that I was showing you, did that factor in?
Did it factor in any kind of increases from PG&E? Is it more PG&E being flatlined, which we know is not going to be the case?
Well, you mean, looking long-term at potential changes that PG&E would make within a given year? No, I mean, it's nearly impossible for us, as a power agency, to, I guess, guess what PG&E will do in one year to the next. I mean, it's difficult enough for us to forecast what PG&E's rates are going to be until a few days before they, you know, go into effect, especially at the end of the year, which is primarily when they make most of their larger rate changes. So those typically get public and released to the public, I think last year, it was on December 30th, and it went into effect on January 1. So it's difficult for us to forecast what PG&E will do in three months, let alone in five to eight months or to a year. I think in terms of our ability to respond as a public agency, it's something that we can do, and something that we have done in the past. And when PG&E made changes to their PCAA that impacted our customers overall, it was within about a two- to three-month period that we were able to, and our procurement staff was able to recalculate this, test the rates, and then launch those at a reduction comparatively when PG&E made the rate change that went into effect on January 1, which we did result in being slightly more expensive. But I think that speaks to the nimbleness of our agency to be able to respond quickly, and we always do, and I think that's something that we're always trying to do, as far as operations, to the benefit of our customer base.
Right, and I guess where I was going was, the rate savings that you put in, these percentages, if anything, they're probably conservative figures. And that's not for you to reply to, you don't really have to. I'll take it on myself, but I'm guessing that they're probably somewhat conservative because, I mean, there's articles every other week that you're reading about, you know, well, in the next three years, there's going to be this 5% increase by PG&E in their rates to customers, and just, I mean, we're constantly getting hammered, and they're being quoted saying these things, too. So I'm not putting you guys on the spot, I'm just thinking that these are probably kind of conservative numbers on your end.
Well, yeah, some of them are conservative, as I was saying before, where we had that 6% to 9%, we had some customers that experienced a 14% reduction, some that experienced closer to the 6% range. But for the sake of presentation, I wanted to present something a little bit more consistent with the general average.
No, thank you, and I appreciate that. Did you have another comment?
Yeah, if it's helpful, I think, you know, when you're looking at those numbers that were showing rate savings over time, and remembering, for the first couple of years, we were at 6% to 9%, and in some categories, 12% and 14% savings for customers, what's unique? What's unique about us and what we were required to do, and rightfully so, is we have always, since our inception, had to pay money to cover long-term legacy contracts that PG&E had. What you see, that precipitous drop in about '15, '16, '17, right about 2016, is when PG&E started finding more and more ways, shall we say, to apply that, and those rates increased dramatically. I think, if you want to picture it, it's like a yoke that we carry. Those rates, I mean, where would we be at? I'd ask Mr. Cypher's if he could take a quick, really speculate, but without any PCA whatsoever, with the contracts that we have, where would we be at right now in terms of rate potentially?
18% savings.
Yeah. I mean, that's how much we'd have to play with and give back to the public and put into and put into things that might actually benefit the people of this county, so.
Yeah, you're right, you know, and I think, to date, our agency's been able to put back into our communities somewhere around $80 million, just in terms of the savings. So it's pretty substantial. I think it's going to continue to be, you know, a difficult road until the PCA disappears to be able to offer 18% savings. But the day that we can, it'll be a pretty great day for all community members in the residential and in the commercial sector.
So that's just, I wanted to make sure we all understood, and I'm sure the public is interested in making, in understanding why all of a sudden that tightening occurred, and also the degree of success to be able to keep that small advantage, to offer not only cleaner power, but at least a little bit cheaper. So we're going to cross our fingers and hope we continue to do that.
All right, so no further questions from council at this point. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing and see if there's any public comments from anyone. Ms. Alderman?
We didn't need another Sonoma Clean Power commercial. We have them regularly here from Mark Landman. We all know about it. The elephant in the room is, this is a much more expensive program. You're earning money, you're costing us citizens more money to pass your political, for your political reasons, not be, you should be looking at the cheapest cost. Sonoma Clean Power uses statewide averages in their ones. Sonoma County was very renewable with PG&E, with the geysers and the geothermal ones. Those, we've all, there's lots of people who agree with me on that, and you need to look at the cost savings. I'm tired of you guys using your environmental stance for your political gain. Mark Landman, the only thing on his Facebook page this week was about this agenda item and getting credit from his Sonoma Clean Power buddies for having this passed. He is, this is the same week where, five years ago, this week, PG&E saved his house. And he's bashing PG&E once again. He allowed power washing into the hazmat-fired materials into the city storm water for over four months.
Please stay with the agenda item.
This is the agenda item.
Kind of strain of...
No, it is not. It is Sonoma Clean, it's talking about environmentalism and Sonoma Clean Power and personal actions of a council who should be excusing himself since he is the board of, he is chair of the board right now. He thought he shouldn't be even speaking on this item. I'm not the one who's the problem here, Mr. Mayor. You need to get that down. Sorry, I'm shaking, I'm so upset.
There's no, calm down, nobody's calling you a problem right now. Don't worry about it. You have plenty of time to go.
You got, you need to stop using this environmental, you have two sides to you, all of you. You have the real personal side, where you have actions, where you cause harm for environmental. My two cats died because of the contamination that Mark Landman, Mark Landman watched for four months in front of his house, that you didn't do a building code for 17 months. This is what Sonoma Clean Power doesn't know. This shouldn't be bad. This is about money for them, but they need to know what kind of person their chair of, and how, what he does harm to the city, more than he does good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Yes, please, Loriann.
Thank you, Loriann Barber, resident of Kattati. I'm having like an allergy thing, so I sound a bit like a frog. Anyway, I really want to appreciate the council for taking up this item. I work for the Center for Climate Protection, and I'm just representing myself, but I want to say that the Center for Climate Protection has been facilitating and encouraging CCAs all over the state because going green and then something like Evergreen is the, pretty much, the easiest way for anybody, including a municipality, to greatly reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. So I'm really excited about the city of Kattati considering this and hopefully voting for it because it will move us forward in terms of our goals and in helping in the climate crisis. And I think it's totally worth, and I think you guys figured it out already in your budget, but I think it's worth that for our future, for our children's future, for the future of the planet. It's not just about, you know, right this minute. And I also want to say that it's great that the city of Kattati is taking this up. As you already mentioned, only the city of Sonoma of the cities in Sonoma County has done it already. And I was in conversation with a friend who lives in Santa Rosa, and they're planning to take it up soon, and he said it would really make a big difference to them to hear about other cities going forward. So I think Kattati can do something good for our tiny, local, little community, and for the larger community, and even for the planet by taking this step. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Jeff, please.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Jeff Cypher's with Sonoma Clean Power, but happy to be a resident of Kattati. And I wanted to share where Evergreen came from. Back when we were designing Sonoma Clean Power, people were asking, what's the power source mix that you could create that if everyone in the world copied you and fed all their buildings and cars with that energy, we would be done, completely done with climate change? And that's what Evergreen is. Evergreen is a mix of resources that are designed to match the load of Sonoma County and Mendocino. We have a very mild climate relative to a lot of the world, and so that's why we have a lot of geothermal in it. We have the solar for the hot summer days, and we'll be adding some storage to it over time. But what's exciting about that is, we don't need natural gas plants to back it up. So Director Landman and councilmember made this point, but I want to underline it. You could literally run Evergreen for all the powers, resources in the world, and they wouldn't need natural gas to back it up, or coal. And I think that's what matters a lot to me. The other point that the woman a couple speakers back made a point about cost, and I think it's a good point. I think it's really important for us to care a lot about cost. And one thing to be aware of is that in California, on January 1 of next year, the building code is going to change pretty dramatically. It's going to require that almost all new homes require solar on their rooftops. And Sonoma Clean Power has filed an application with the Energy Commission to allow a pre-purchase of Evergreen for a home in lieu of solar on a rooftop. And we've calculated that would save each home that does that about $13,000. So Evergreen is a tool that we're designing to meet future code standards that could actually be a significant cost savings. And so even though it is a cost increase for the city of Kattati, and I don't want to pretend it's not, but relative to where all codes are going, it could actually be a significant cost saving. So I think it's important to kind of keep those aspects in mind, and I appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments and your time. Anyone else like to speak to this topic? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to council for discussion, and we'll start with Councilmember Landman.
I knew you were going that way, even though you didn't look.
I didn't even do the eye contact.
Yeah, no, you got me tonight. A lot of things to say, but I'll try and keep it short. So it was mentioned earlier tonight that one of the biggest CHG reductions that ever happened in this city, at least from the term of municipal accounts, and what we do with our money and our use of electrical power, was when we joined Sonoma Clean Power. Boom, just like that, like magic, flipping a switch. We reduced our greenhouse gas emissions 50%, and we actually saved money in doing it, too. That's the best part. That was a big thing. And we've noticed that, the press has noticed that, the public, I think, now all knows that and recognizes that. I hope the public recognizes tonight is likewise something big, and in fact, it's even bigger because if we're sitting at about a 50% reduction from PG&E right now with just the clean start, entry-level power package from Sonoma Clean Power, and we move to Evergreen, we reduce this already much cleaner package by about 60%, not quite a two-thirds. I was hoping you'd make that because it sounds so good, but still, 60% reduction, that is remarkable. So Evergreen is probably the biggest CHG reduction this city has ever seen, certainly probably will ever see, certainly in the power sector. I don't see how you can beat that. And so I think there's a lot of value in that. I think when we talk about cost, yes, I'm concerned about that, and that's why I pushed the staff of Sonoma Clean Power, as chair of the Board of Directors and as vice chair last year. No, I wanted to see numbers developed for all the cities because people need to know this and assess it. But at the same time, when I look at, for, in our case, 17K, that's pretty cheap when you look at, what's the latest news? Reputable scientists looking at saying the five years is about the wiggle room we have left if we want to escape truly cataclysmic effects from greenhouse warming, record temperatures, and weird weather everywhere, year after year, not seeing like anything we've seen on record. And of course, no federal leadership whatsoever, not at all, actually going backwards. So interestingly enough, while we usually deal with small mundane things, as we should since we're a small town, we have the chance to do something really big tonight, to make a step in the direction that actually does something about these things. So besides the fact that it's such a great reduction for us, there's one other thing I love, and Loriann, you hinted at that. In a nice way, in a pleasant way, in a supportive way, we can throw the gauntlet down to our neighbors, to local businesses, and certainly to other cities. Sandra Rosa, I'm looking at you. To follow this path, because if you can look long-term and think of the value of what you're doing with this investment, all of a sudden, that money looks really, really small. So I wanted to share that because I think it's important. We've all thought about these things, but this is an item that can make a big difference. And I'd love to see, Kattati, since we were the second city that voted on Sonoma Clean Power, the first have voted unanimously, I'm hoping we can be the second city to adopt Evergreen. And I don't know if it was unanimous at Sonoma, but I hope it will be here. So I'd love to see if we can have that synchronicity for Kattati one more time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I am definitely in support of this. We also did receive some correspondence from various citizens. There's a couple of things that you mentioned in your presentation, and it makes me think about the question about education. I think education does need to continue because I think that people still are confused at exactly what Sonoma Clean Power does. There is a partnership with PG&E. It's not like you get that energy to people's houses. PG&E still is in charge of the grid, and I think people really still don't quite get that. So I agree with you that the education needs to move forward. The other thing that you said that really caught me, because it's in the news a lot, too, is the fact that Sonoma Clean Power is not-for-profit, and it allows Sonoma Clean Power to focus on its customers. And I think if you read a lot of the newspapers lately, that is some of the criticism that PG&E is getting, is that they have shareholders, and they have a tendency, because they are a for-profit company, to turn their focus on their shareholders. And they sometimes have difficulty, you know, looking both ways to make sure that their customers, as well as their shareholders, are taken care of, whereas you get to very specifically focus just on the customers. Another thing I think people, you know, need more education on, because it, some of the comments that were made, made it seem like it's this separate entity with, you know, this big paycheck and all of that. And it's not. It's not for profit. And I think that people need that message going forward. But yes, I think that this is a good move for us, and we'll be supporting this.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
First of all, I beg your indulgence, I'm also fighting a cold like Ms. Barber, so coughing and sneezing up here. I remember way back when we looked at this CCA initially, and one of our concerns was having a seat at the table when we first started that. And I look at what we did there, and I think that I'm very appreciative of having that and having that opportunity. I think as leaders, elected leaders in the community, our citizens look to us to set the example. Although there may be an additional initial higher cost, that cost, I think, is negligible if we are in a position where the climate crisis is getting worse and worse with the greenhouse gases, et cetera. So I think that I would be proud to support something like this and moving us toward cleaner renewables.
All right, thank you very much. You know, I guess from my perspective, you know, looking at the cheapest option was a comment that was made, you know, I think the term is looking at the best value. So that's not always the least expensive, because the least expensive oftentimes will not get you a better value. And it's $17,000 to our budget, and I'm not going to call that an impact, I'm going to call it a cost. These are things that we have to do. And, you know, if you, if you want to buy, I'm going to keep things real simple, you want to buy recycled paper, it used to be, that used to cost so much more than regular paper. But guess what? Over time, it's almost gone the other way. And that's just how things are. There's a whole concept of supply and demand that I think we need to keep in the forefront. There is another source of energy that I don't know if you guys have looked into, it's called conservation. You know? People need to keep that in mind, too. Maybe don't keep so many lights on in the house, and there's so many things that we can do. So I wanted to just put that out there. And I don't want to kind of coin that phrase, it's, I really, I heard it somewhere else, let's just say. My biggest concern is you can't reverse some of the negative impacts that are going on in our environment right now and have been going on for a while, and we're seeing, it's certainly not a cataclysmic effect yet, and we don't want it to be that, but I mean, we're seeing, there's so many scientific reports out there. There are species of birds that are migrating north and up in elevation. Why is that? Because it's heating up where they are, and the habitat is becoming unsuitable. There's less food, it's not the right habitat for them. That's a sign. People may just say, well, you know, it's a natural sign, and maybe it is. And we won't even have to get into any discussion on why is the climate changing? What is the nexus of that? It doesn't matter. It's happening. We can see it. Fires are getting significantly worse in our state, there's no doubt about this. So my biggest concern is that if there are these impacts to things like air and water, and we have to pay a small price to make them somewhat better, or at least not get progressively worse, I'm right there. I say that is a really good investment, and that's why I'm talking about best value, not cheapest cost. So I personally think, and I think there's some agreement up here, that it's time to make a positive difference, and now's that time. So I would entertain a motion.
Well, I think I know what I'd like to do right now, and is I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to switch... to switch the city's electrical counts from Clean Start to Evergreen as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Not only was there a second, there was even a "yet". I heard that "yet" too, so that's really good. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 401 vote in favor to switch the city Katati to Evergreen Power. Thank you all for your comments. And it is time for a bio-break. So we will break for about five or eight minutes.
Order here, but that's agreement for economic development. And we will go to the city manager for this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is a follow-up on some earlier work that was recently completed with a we used a consultant by the name of Grun and Grun that do fiscal analyses of land use, and that report, it's a really high-level summary report. It included an analysis of the market area that Katati finds itself in, and also interviews with nine different businesses, which are listed as an appendix in the back with some summary comments from them, as well as the sort of the interview form that was used in those business interviews. And it was a good, it was a good first step in understanding, at least at a high level, what some of the, what some of the challenges are, both for greenfield development as well as existing businesses. And so the next step is to, is to dive deeper on those concepts and really understand what that means in terms of zoning and land use code. So the attached scope of work is we were looking for consultants. We got a couple of proposals for work, for this kind of work, and the proposal that's attached is, is we felt the best fit for the type of the type of work effort that would lay in front of us. Both someone that's really well-versed in land use planning, so understands the planning concepts very well, does work both in the public sector and for the private sector, so understands both the sort of the municipal considerations, as well as the, you know, what a private entity would be facing in terms of cost structures for development, and also for operations. And then what isn't included in this yet is some continuation of that, of the fiscal consultant's work, is Grun and Grun. I'm still working with them in terms of negotiating the final scope and, and cost that would go hand in hand. So the idea is that this consultant would take the initial work done by Grun and Grun, would go, would continue those interviews with stakeholders, as well as a pretty robust public process around sort of what they're finding in that process. And so there'd be, you know, quite a bit of, I think, back and forth, both with stakeholders and in this public forum here. And it would result in some potential strategies, a handful of potential strategies that we could use. And the fiscal consultant, Grun and Grun, their role in this would be to, to really take those different strategies and test them fiscally, both in terms of the, what's, in terms of the what the city's impact would be fiscally, and then what the private developers' impact would be fiscally. So it would be a way to analyze, analyze the changes and make sure that we're continuing to move the ball forward and maybe coming up with, you know, some different solutions, maybe incentives that might help get these things across the finish line, especially along, in the downtown specific plan area and the Highway 116 corridor in terms of new development. Those are the primary focus areas. And with that, I think the only thing else I'll add is that really the overall goal here is to, is to continue to advance the community's goals. And I mean, community as a whole. The city being part of that, of course. The city having the fiscal piece of it that they need to always keep an eye on to make sure that we're not, that we're continuing to expand our sort of our fiscal viability, you know, as we, as we move things forward. But also hopefully, you know, meeting what we'd have to meet the community's goals in terms of services and jobs and the other things that are important, and the actual types of mixes of uses that we're talking about that are important to the community. While at the same time meeting the, the needs of the landowners to move things forward, to actually make it all a reality. This is something that, you know, I've, I've talked a lot about with different, in different cities. It's not uncommon where, you know, you have specific plans or general plans that that get adopted, and there's a lot of, and it's a good visioning process that happens as part of it, it's a critical piece of it. But oftentimes, you know, we've had the compounding effect of the economy changing dramatically, the retail landscape changing dramatically, since a lot of these things had been envisioned the first time. But it's really just revisiting that and making sure that, that the visioning and the, and the fiscal, fiscalization of land use work together well. So that's, I guess that's really what we're talking about, is checking back in post-recession with the new retail landscape we're dealing with and making sure that all of our zoning and our policies that allow well uses within our zoning, I should say, and our land use policies make sense. Or if they could be tweaked, that's what we'd be talking about as we go through this process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for city manager? Yes, councilmember.
So some of these responses in the addendum. When were the surveys actually done? Is this pretty recent, or is it old, or is it?
It's pretty recent. It was earlier in this year.
Earlier this year, okay. Because, you know, some of this stuff is a little bit vague, and it's sort of hard to really understand what it is that people are really saying. So when it says things like land use with flexibility, well, what does that mean? Are we planning on diving a little bit deeper into that? Does that mean people have an expectation that it's a free-for-all and you do and build whatever you want because you can? Or?
Yeah, so like that, like that specific comment, I mean, they are, they are fairly high-level at this point, but the idea was to take it to the next level. I mean, that specific comment was more about, I think it was in the Highway 116 corridors where one of that, one of the interviewees brought that up. And that was just really about the, like, within the commercial gravine scene zone, there is a limited number of types of uses that are allowed. And and it would be great to have some flexibility to, to look at other opportunities that might be, that might fit and might be compatible with what the community would want to see there. And so it wouldn't be, I mean, none of this would just be a change that would happen. It would be a discussion, dialogue about possibilities, and if it's something that.
So that would be the deeper dive that you're suggesting that then would come back and say, you know, people have suggested we have X, Y, and Z is what we allow. It'd be great if we, you know, could also have A, B, and C, and then we kind of say, oh, yeah, well, that makes sense, or well, A and B makes sense, but C doesn't, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so, yeah, my goal would be that, obviously, there'd be the, there'd be the interviews, continued interviews and research with landowners and business owners who would suggest a whole menu of things potentially, right? And then they would, we would be working with the consultant and probably say, no, that's not going to fly. We know that, you know? And so it would be a whittled-down list that then we would probably bring to a public process and say, these are some things that may have some value in terms of further discussion in a public meeting. So at that point, it would just, you know, further kind of whittle down those possibilities as options.
Okay. And it also seems that we have a little bit of educating to do because some of these comments, it makes it seem like people need a little education.
Yeah, particularly, I think, some, some of the comments from some of the, some business owners. Dude, yeah, they could use a little bit of updating in terms of how things currently are.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, any questions for staff?
No, the only question I had, and again, I may have missed this in looking at this, but you said the funding has been budgeted from the fiscal year 1920 budget from the excess bond proceeds funds?
That's correct, yes.
And which excess bond proceeds funds are those?
So when redevelopment dissolved, redevelopment agency dissolved,
Oh, okay.
There was some excess funds that the council had set aside for specific economic development projects. That's, that's proposed.
That was it as far as questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Landman?
No questions right now. I have a comment after public comment, I think.
All right, that sounds great. And I have no questions either, although the city manager and I did talk. I don't know how this plays in. It's probably a little too much in the weeds, but it seems like the businesses in town, you know, if we knew what kind, what they needed to run their business, and I guess I'm thinking more in the way of supplies and not services, which usually are not taxable. Supplies are. You know, let's just say we had a wine industry business in our town that needed bottles or corks or labels. Can, do we have that business in town that could then help support not only that business, but then others in the area? You know, are people having our, are our businesses, are they having to go elsewhere into the Bay Area, Southern California, out of state to get what they need? Where if we had that business in our town, we could be providing them, and it would probably have some long-term benefit. You know, they wouldn't go away so quickly. So and I don't know how that plays into this. It sounds like really they're looking more at how some of these ideas fit within our zoning as it stands now, which I totally agree with, but it's just something I think we need to keep in the back of our head somewhere. Somewhere back there. Okay, with that, I'm going to open public comment. Seeing no one, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for some action. Unless you have further comments. You did have some comments, you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, excuse me. It, it's interesting, you know. Some decades ago, Katati was viewed as pretty inflexible in terms of planning land use business restrictions and stuff, and that has not been the case, I think, for years. And I think tonight is just more evidence of that, so I'm certainly open to that. With the changes in retail, specifically from online shopping, it really does strike me to have some openness to be willing to take a look at these things. On the other hand, I agree with my colleagues. I was very pleased to hear you talk about a robust public process because I think that's going to be really necessary here if we want to do our jobs right, because when you conduct a series of, what is this, roughly a dozen business-oriented interests that we're talked to, that's really only one facet of the land use interests and values in Katati. And that, of course, is completely different than what some other people might think. I look at the page that lists all the questions, addendum two on 294, and one jumps out at me under land use permits, costs, and other development challenges. The business suggesting we have to decide. It's easier to do business with Ronard Park. And I think perhaps, maybe in some areas, perhaps that is easier. But I think it really goes back to the wonderful way that the mayor set up the description of cost versus value, or what's cheap. Just getting something at the cheapest cost really bring a value. And I don't think that's always the case, and I really think that's the case here because some of those standards that do make it somewhat easier to do business perhaps in Ronard Park are ones that Katatians over the years have made very clear to us that they don't really support or want. They have different land use values. So I guess this is a way of just suggesting, I'm open to this, I'm supporting this, but I really would like to make sure there's a stronger robust public process and that all the people we're working with in the business community understand that that will be part of this, too. We've gone down that road before, and I remember how that went 10 years ago. It was somewhat rocky.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions from Councilmember Harvey or Moore?
No, I would just add to what Councilmember Landman was talking about, and I think that there was a perception that we were so difficult to deal with, and I think some of that perception has still been carried on. I think it is imperative that we look at really what is a good mix for the community, and if there are situations where we do have to look at zoning, potential zoning changes. It's a, it's a smaller group of businesses here. Knowing many of the people that may have been interviewed, I'd be curious to actually see the full questionnaire and the answers and who may have answered those, having had previous experience with some of them, especially through the Chamber of Commerce. But I, but I think it's important to look at that. It doesn't, it may allow us to see something that we are not presently seeing. And it's incumbent upon us to do our due diligence to, to look at those things. So I would support that.
Yeah, again, you know, I just, I kind of hearken back on, when we when we first started meeting with mayors and council members, we would meet at this one large conference room table, and we dropped all political boundaries, and we said, what is the greatest good that we can do for our county? And some of the players, I will say, that had automobile dealerships in their cities weren't players because they had, they had their cash cow. So they kind of, they didn't really want to play much. But the rest of us would sit there and say, you know, what are, what are those industries? And I'm going back 20 years now, maybe more. What are those industries that are up and coming in the county? And I really think, if I remember right, it was like the wine industry, the medical supply industry. Those were two big ones. They're both here. They're both big. Don't know that they're still growing. They still have needs. Are there ways that some businesses that maybe we could entice here, which is a whole nother issue? And then another layer of the onion is, how do you encourage the landowner to agree we're going to do this? And do we still have from a citizens' referendum of 43,000 square foot freeze on his, okay, so now that's coming back to haunt us, and if we wanted to put a roundabout there, we couldn't do that either, so there's a couple of things going against us. You know, it's just, these are planning tools that, you know, you really should not have taken away from city planners to, because everything gets scrutinized by the public, regardless of what project we would bring in. It would come to an open public venue. So, you know, why, those were rash decisions, I'm telling you right now, that were made by people who were not long-term thinkers. There, I've said it, and I mean it, and I've said it before. Those are people who can't see more than a year or two down the road.
I wonder what the shared nexus was that made that happen. We'll never know, I guess.
No, we won't. So then going beyond that, you know, thinking of what could these businesses be that, you know, maybe we could entice, are they still going to be around in five, 10, 15 years? I think those are the kinds of questions, again, I'm not sure how that really fits in to, you know, what we're going to be doing with this, but I just, I need those questions in the back of people's mind when they're thinking of some of this stuff. Because I think they're important enough to, to really look at, at some level. Off my soapbox, yes, please. I'm getting down from it now.
So one, one of the things that's in here is about selective enforcement of restrictions. I think it gives us the opportunity as we add new programs, like we just implemented some enforcement and how we're going to go about that, that we share that with the businesses. You didn't have all the tools in the toolbox to be able to do that, and we've now gotten more tools in the toolbox so that the person doing that work now can have a process and have a vetted process to go through to do that. And I think that, that helps not only them doing that job, but it makes it a lot less selective because there are more specifics and more tools. So I think some of those things, it's worthwhile sharing with folks so that they can see the processes that we have. You know, we've talked multiple times about signage. That one- That one is going to be always a tough nut to crack, because it can go many different ways, and some people want to be able to do whatever they want, and there are safety issues around that. And I think oftentimes, same with the inflexibility that some say with City Hall, some of the things have to do with safety, and it doesn't occur to people. We, you know, received bad comments a couple months ago about a business that was having problems establishing, and it was taking, well, there were safety issues, and it just hadn't occurred to them. And so, that's the part that we really need to let businesses know, is that you don't just make up these things just to make them up. The city's responsibility is partly to ensure that the public is safe, and I think that oftentimes, businesses don't necessarily kind of think of that in their, you know, forward thinking on that, so I think we can help them with that.
Any further comments? Might entertain a motion, then.
Hey, make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Loki Planning, however you say it, Associates for Economic Development Assistant. Did I massacre?
It's Lueki, but I think it's pretty close.
Okay, all right. So sorry.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, albeit that motion was improperly enunciated. All in favor, say aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show a 401 vote in favor to move that forward. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to our final regular agenda item, which is appointment of voting delegate and alternates to the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, we are getting a jump on this, because the word on the street is that hotel rooms fill up fast, and so we just wanted to hold our place in the line for when that conference comes up in October. This is down in Long Beach, as the staff report says, October 16th through 18th. We don't yet have the packet of resolutions that the league will send to us, so we'll have to, we'll have a follow-up council agenda item to talk about specific resolutions that'll be before the voting delegate or delegates, when we have them sometime before October. But the action tonight is really to discuss who we want to send to the conference, if we want to send an alternate, if we could nominate somebody and also select an alternate. And I will just add that last, last year, Councilmember Skillman, I believe, was the voting delegate. I don't believe there was an alternate last year, just because of people's schedules, but this year, obviously, we're having that discussion again now. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we will open the public hearing for public comment. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. I was strongly encouraged to go to this conference. I've not been to it before as a voting delegate. I was encouraged by my wife to go. I'm not sure what that meant, but we'll let that, we'll let that go for now. So...
We did the best.
Yeah, right. So I'm, I'm interested in going, absolutely. I know Vice Mayor Skillman, who's not here, has also expressed interest. I believe you have expressed interest, Councilmember Harvey. Do all five of us, are we all going? What's going on here?
I have never gone to this, but I'm not interested this year, so I'm happy to see you and Councilmember Skillman, if neither one of you want to go, I'd be happy to see you, that my colleagues go. It's all good with me.
Okay, so we have one of five that is not going to go this year. We've got that down.
I would gladly defer this to my fellow councilmembers.
Okay, there's two out of five, so now we're down.
We're down.
Have you been to Long Beach?
I have been to Long Beach, yes, but not for League Conference.
I've never been to Long Beach.
Would you, did you want to go to the podium and speak to this issue?
I don't think I need to.
No, okay, all right.
I don't think that's required.
That's fine, that's fine. I don't know, I mean, I will divulge that when Damian and I were meeting, as we do every Tuesday, you did contact Vice Mayor Skillman, and I don't know if she was at all emphatic. I will say that at our last meeting, two weeks ago, she had brought, you know, the flyer that I'm sure we all got in the mail, and said, are you interested in going to me? Because she goes, I would really like to go again. And I said, well, yeah, I'm actually interested, now that I have a little more time on my hands than I have in previous years, that I would be interested in going, and I would be interested in being the voting delegate, because if I go, I'm going to make a point of obviously doing that, so. So that's where we are. Time for a discussion. And we have about 10 minutes before we have to make a motion to extend our meeting.
So there you go.
No, we go, we don't go anywhere.
Would it be appropriate to make a nomination at this point?
Sure.
I would nominate for mayor as the delegate, and Councilmember Harvey as the alternate delegate.
Okay. Motion on the floor?
So let me ask, how many times have you gone down to this particular conference over the years? Or how long has it been?
I've not been to Long Beach. When was the last time I went? I haven't been.
Oh, thank you.
Oops, sorry. I haven't been.
I'll turn their microphone.
It's getting late, we're getting...
I think...
I'm just wanting to make sure, I'm completely comfortable sending either you or Wendy. I just want to make sure there's some parity, because I remember you went sometimes, but I think it's been some years.
I've gone to Sacramento, and it's been, I think it's been a few years. It was when it was last in Sacramento.
So you have gone to Sacramento, though?
I've gone to Sacramento.
Thank you for your service. So, I mean, with that, I think there's some clear direction here. Kidding. It is getting late, sorry. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor, and it sounded like then-Councilmember Skillman went last year, and she was the only representative that went last year, if I recall.
Yeah, because all of our schedules were sort of weird.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, we don't have a second yet, and then...
Well, could we say then, as a group, we're going to agreement, since more of us are being interested, more of us are available to go now? Perhaps, or I'm done with my, I might want to go some year, I'm really not, but perhaps we can then agree that we'll do something where we'll, like we do, often rotating other positions, like the mayor. We will make sure that we take turns with this. Somebody went one year, the next year should be somebody different, the following year, ideally should be somebody different. If there's a group agreement with that, I could be supportive of that, certainly.
Yeah, I don't think this...
A general thumbs up.
I don't think this would, I mean, I can speak for Wendy, I don't think it will make or break her if she doesn't get to go this year. She said she was interested in going this year, because she found it very interesting last year.
They are very interesting. I love the sessions. I mean, you just get to learn so much from all the different cities. I sometimes have a hard time figuring out exactly which one to go to, and sometimes I'll split my time on one of them. And you will definitely enjoy the delegate thing, because it's also interesting to go see the pre-talkup of those items, because sometimes you, you get a really good understanding as people are kind of negotiating what's going to actually be brought before the group.
Right, and we will see all these items that will be voted on, and we'll have to take action on that.
And sometimes there's lots, and sometimes there's not.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, this is helpful discussion, I think, tonight, because I think this is the first time in almost a decade I've been doing this. We've actually had more than two people that wanted to go, so that's why I thought it would be good for us, just to throw out some good, good faith ground rules, and with that, I think we're good to go. I'll give you a second on that.
All right, so any further discussion on this item at this point?
My confidence is only up there due to the fact that the items will have to come back before the council.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I'm confident with you guys.
Are you trying to define, are you trying to define the word trust?
On some issues.
It's fine, I can understand that. Okay, so with that, we will take a vote. All in favor of sending myself and Councilmember Harvey down to Long Beach in October for three days? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Sounds like a 401 vote. All right, thank you all very much, and we will now, let me check the time, 9:51, move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, to make it quick.
Yeah, no pressure. All right, so, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The first thing I wanted to mention, which I didn't, I didn't mention to the mayor just earlier today in our weekly meeting, because I wanted to save it for tonight, for, I guess, just all of us to hear. But...
Those weekly meetings are now officially over, it sounds like.
I just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, this is the second year that we had put together a CAFER and submitted to the GFOA for award, and we won the award for the CAFER this year for financial documents. So, it's the highest form of recognition for governmental accounting and financial reporting, so it's a big deal, all right? So the CAFER is judged by an impartial panel, and it has to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating the constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users to read the CAFER, so that's their quote, right? So anyway, very exciting, extremely exciting, and it's great work by Angela...
Congratulations.
...and her team. So, anyway.
Thank you.
It sounds like a double-themed press release.
Yes.
On the eve of the city getting its second CAFER award, they have become 100% Evergreen Power users. Boy, this is getting good. Do you have more stuff to add?
It's the copier that runs that, that award, yeah, or the, is 100% clean, yeah. Oh, all right. So a little bit more, just, we're coming back down-to-earth a bit, we're doing backflow testing, and it's that time of year, so just so you know, letters are going out. I mean, we don't normally announce it, but just wanted to let you know, we, you know, we do an annual backflow program. It's required by state law that all the backflows are tested annually. That's the city's backflows, as well as all the private backflows. It prevents people with wells, or pools, or whatever, from accidentally pushing water back into the public water system. So, that's where the, that's where the state law requires it. Anyway, we're doing that, so the letters are going out, and if anyone has any questions, they can contact Administrative Services about it, if anyone comes to you guys with questions about the letter. It's, it's an annual program, it's been in place for years and years and years, but...
Also, construction?
Yes, just so you know. On the construction front, we have some good news there. East Cattati Avenue, that paving project is advertised. I think I mentioned that last time, but that opens on July 2nd, those bids open on July 2nd, so you'll likely, hopefully, well, the hope is that you'll see that on the July 23rd council meeting, so fingers crossed on that. Also, the 2019 road preservation project, this is the Restavel Section, as well as East Cattati, the railroad tracks down to Orowood Highway, and also Orowood Highway from East Cattati to and through William and George intersection, so repaving that part. East Cattati is a surface treatment, not like the Orowood Highway surface treatment, it's a slurry with crack seal. And that is also out to bid, and we have a bid opening there on July 16th. With a little bit of luck, maybe we'll be doing both on the 23rd, but we're not sure yet, so. Anyway, they're both around the corner, so that's good news. So we're going to see a lot of paving work here in August and September, so it's going to be busy out there. And then, well, the well 1A, I mentioned last time that it was being serviced, you guys had approved an agreement on that, and it's back, it's back in service now, just in time for the warmer weather in the summer, so that's good. And also, just to let you know, I think some of us had heard from an adjacent property owner that was disturbed by the whine of the motor, so the way the pump is set is, well, the pump itself is the part that physically pumps the water that's deep in the well, but the motor is the electric motor that drives the pump, and that's above, that's above ground, and that was the whining sound that was disturbing some of the neighbors. We did, for years, have had a little brick, like CMU brick wall there to reflect the sound away, but still, you know, we had heard some complaints. So the change that was made is we changed it from, it's a, the type of pump I just described is called a turbine pump. We switched to what's called a submersible pump, and the difference is that the pump still is in, you know, deep in the well, like it is with a turbine pump, but the motor, the actual electric motor, is no longer on top of the wellhead, above, you know, above ground. It actually gets put down the pump, all the way down with the, with the actual pump itself, so everything's way down well casing, so it'd be very hard to hear much of anything when that goes down there, so, at least with regard to the well pump itself. We still do have a booster pump, which was recently changed, and it's much quieter now, too. That's above ground, but anyway, hopefully that helps with some of the sound issues in the neighboring residential properties. So, thanks for public works on that. And then, on recreation, we have our third consecutive sold-out week for Camp Cattati, and the campers have enjoyed many fun crafts and projects, including playing outside games, spending lunch each day in La Plaza Park, and taking weekly field trips. And so some of the field trips so far, as you might have noticed on the Facebook page, were the police station, we went to the ranch, Ronda Fletti Ranch, and we also went to Oliver's Market, that was today, and I think they were, well, they were doing fun things. They weren't like mopping the floor, doing things like that with Oliver's. So, it was a good, it was a good transition from the ranch, where they could see kind of where things come from, and then the market, kind of where they go next. Not, not animals, hogging produce. All right, and then, so we also have had a successful Spanish camp, a junior tennis camp, and three different children's theater camps so far this summer. We're running concurrently our counselor and training program for people in the biz, it's a CIT program, and that's, that's where teens gain hands-on job skills, working in our camps, and I think we even have one of our teens that we know very well there, working as a CIT. Other summer camps that are still scheduled to take place this summer include two more tennis camps, farm camp, as was mentioned earlier tonight, gymnastics camp, Lego camps, and sport camps. And then throughout the summer, we continue to serve free lunch for any child under 18 at La Plaza Park on weekdays between 12:00 and 12:30, and as we've mentioned numerous times, there's no paperwork required, there's no, you just have to be under 18, and then you're eligible. And a new wrinkle to this, though, is thanks to our partnership with Redwood Empire Food Bank on, for this program, and other local nonprofits. What was happening is, so they'd send a certain number of meals down, we would serve them, right? If, if we overshot it, you know, then they might reduce the next, number of meals the next week, or if we undershot, they'd send more meals the next week, so that we had enough for all the children that were at the park. But a new wrinkle is that for the meals that weren't served, because we have more meals than children that want them, for example, they're now being donated to local adults in need for food, so rather than them getting tossed, or whatever, they're then being picked up and served to adults that need meals as well. Farmers Market is in full swing, will continue on Thursday nights throughout the summer from 4:30 to 7:30 each week in La Plaza Park. A reminder, tomorrow, June 26th is our inaugural, the first meeting of the teen book club that we're doing in partnership with the Stonemaui County Library, and it's going to be here in the Copeland Room at 4:00 PM. It's, it's where teens can choose a free book to read, and they'll continue meet on the last Wednesday of each month to discuss and recommend books to other teens. So, we're always looking for more programs for teens, this is one of them that rose to the surface, so we're going to see how that partnership works. On Saturday, July 13th, we're hosting our 27th Annual Cattati Kids' Day and Parade, which I'm sure anyone that's paying attention knows that, but this year's theme is Cattati Country, where we're going to honor Cattati and Stonemaui County's rich farming and agricultural history, so that's right around the corner. And then if you want to be a vendor for that event, or be in the parade, or if you want to volunteer, or you just need program info for any of our programs, you can contact Ashley, as always, at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at CattatiCity.org, and you can always go to our website or the city's Facebook page to learn more about any of these programs. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent report, thank you. Are there any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, there was a recent voicemail that went to, came to me, and I wasn't certain if that voicemail regarding Fletti Ranch had gone to all the councilmembers? No?
Yes.
No?
You got it?
I got it, yes. But there was no...
No name, it was anonymous.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I ask what it was about?
Some sort of reference to weeds at the Fletti Ranch, which I thought was interesting, because I thought some of the animals were taking care of that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the voicemail...
It wasn't concerned it was a fire hazard over there.
Yeah. The voicemail you're referring is, was exactly, exactly the same voicemail, like to the mispronunciations and stuttering.
Correct. It was pre-recorded.
It was like a pre-recorded message that was played to all, yeah.
Oh, that's not very nice.
Yeah. But, but the issue, but we're obviously very aware of, you know, weed abatement, we're, you know, in the process for any city properties. we're, you know, in the process, for any city properties, of dealing with that, so, and working with the Ranch Adobe Fire District.
So, it's not relevant at this point?
It's not relevant.
Thank you.
I was afraid somebody had a sheep hostage who was demanding ransom. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we continue the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Good, we're there. It's 10:01, I'm glad you did that. Okay, any other questions? No, you didn't, I heard you say aye.
Yeah.
Well, your microphone was off, I heard you from there. Any other questions for the city manager?
Not tonight.
No. All right, then we'll go to city councilmember reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Landman.
All right, let's see, two things from the Ledge Committee. We had our Ledge Committee meeting last Friday with Chair Hunley from Sonoma. One thing amended, we took an opposed position, an opposed position on Assemblymember Wieners, SB 592. I don't know if you guys have heard about this, or if you've heard of the process of gutting and amending a bill, which means taking a bill and changing what's in it at the last minute, kind of like fool you, you weren't looking, and at the last minute, it crosses the line, hopefully. And this went a step further, actually, this bill of Senator Wieners was initially related to barbers and cosmetologists when it was amended, had nothing to do with housing. But it was changed to take another shot at essentially removing, controlling local land use control for housing. This bill would have combined portions of SB 50, which we all opposed in this county, as well as SB 30, which, among its other actions, retroactively voids restrictions on density, land use zoning, even design standards. So, pretty big changes to kind of go that way, so that was an easy call for us. We also oppose Garcia's AB 56, I'll keep this short, because it's one of those long CCA, Sonoma Clean Power type bills, but basically would have threatened CCA's abilities to procure their own power services for resource adequacy, and also that being able to purchase types of power allows to move to a greener, decentralized grid in the future. So we also oppose that.
Thank you. I was going to ask, at the last mayor's and councilmembers meeting that we had, Gina Belforte said she would forward the letter that she wrote on behalf of City of Riner Park, and I want to make sure everybody did at least get that copy. Okay, so, so we have a little bit of background on that, and then I got one, which I'm sure we all did, from Nancy, about, here are some of the bills that the league is opposing, some that, you know, we would say you should support. And, I'm going to check in with her tomorrow to find out about the timing of some of these, and there could be, there may be a situation where, you know, our next meeting's now not till July, late.
23rd.
23rd, so that we may need to take some action on before then, and, so I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if that'll be the case, but it could be the case, and I think we already have the authority to do that between the city manager and I, is that not correct?
Yeah, and the, and the council rules. If there's, if there's certain legislation that seems consistent with prior council actions, and it's, and it can't be brought to the next, it's timely in a way that it can't be brought to the next council meeting, then there is that flexibility to do that, with the provision that we would provide the letter that goes out to all the councilmembers.
Right.
Yeah.
So anyway, just to keep, keep that in mind, I mean, that could be an option, and I'm going to, I'll check in with her tomorrow on some of these, probably mostly focusing on the housing bills more than anything else, so, okay. There was really something I wanted to ask you. So there, and I've forgotten. So we'll move on to Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you.
So, I attended last week the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and it was the first meeting for our new executive director, and it was a very, very short meeting. There was only, I think, a couple items on there, so nothing of real importance there. But, on June 13th, I did go to the Santa Rosa Plain GSA meeting, and I'm happy to report that we passed the establishment of the fee and the establishment of registering the wells. So, we will be moving forward with that, and a lot of discussion, but we made it through it, and they both passed, so, yay! One more step.
Good job. Councilmember Moore?
I'm assuming that when you talked about passing the fees, it was the appropriated?
Yes.
Perfect. Pardon me, I do not have any reports tonight.
All right. That's a good report, actually. Just a couple of things, so, a number of us did attend mayor's and councilmembers in Riner Park on the 13th of June, and we did get some updated information from Grant Davis with the Water District, so that was good info. It was very interesting to see how the library's main brain trust has now moved into this building over there in Riner Park, where they used to be downstairs in what I used to call the dungeon when I was on the library commission of the main library in Santa Rosa. It was an awful place, you could almost feel, you know, the toxins that were emanating from the ground there, like radon, it was just a bad, bad gig. So they're in, they're in a much happier place now. For me, it was kind of like this high school reunion, because I had worked with all these people for like six years, like, "Oh, wow, great to see you again." So it was great. And also, I just want to say kudos to Public Works, who I could hear they were out in the Laguna with weed eaters, working, I assume that was Public Works. I didn't go and look. Somebody was weed eating a long stretch of the Laguna today, so I will assume it was Public Works or somebody working for the city and doing that. And that was just on the, sort of the northern side of the Laguna, so it looks really good over there. All right, now we're at item 15, which is.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Oh, yes, please.
I forget about one event, I did attend the Cotati Music Festival, and it seemed to be very well-received and well-attended, and so that would, we haven't seen any numbers yet, but that should have been very successful for the Chamber of Commerce and the support.
Good to know. Excellent, all right, thank you for that. Yeah, I couldn't attend that day. Item 15 is public comment on non-action agenda items. I will open that up for public comment, and seeing no one, we will close that, and we'll move on to item 16. Information received after the agenda was posted? We have none. Thank you. All right, item 17, this is our closed session, we have two topics. The first one is conference with city labor negotiators, Government Code Section, everybody with me, 54957.6, good. City designated representative, city manager or designee, employee organization is the Cotati Police Management Association. And the second item is public employee performance evaluation, and that is California Government Code Section, if you don't know it, 54957, and the title is "City Manager."